Okay, welcome everybody. Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and have Dr. Benitez lead us in the plan.
Sure, please stand and place your right hands over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I start, I just wanna thank our sign language people for joining us, this is very exciting. Yeah, thrilled to have them in the room. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Okay, public hearing. This is the time set aside for public hearing regarding the following, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And we do have, we do have people who are here to speak regarding this issue. We also have online public comment regarding our public hearing issue. Usually, we have 15 minutes set aside for public hearing, but we have five people here in person to speak and we have 10 online comments. So, just wanna let the Board know, usually it's 15 minutes, how do we feel about that? Five in person, 10 online comments. Are we good with distributing the online comments to the Board? And of course, they will become a matter of public record? Is there a consensus in that?
Madam President, I'm going to make a recommendation that you take the comments from the people that are here to comment in public and that you read those that have been submitted because of the significance of this public hearing and that you take them all tonight.
Okay, well then, let's get to it. Our first speaker is Tonja Reyes-Urdanga.
When I downloaded the plan yesterday, this is on the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, of course. When I downloaded the plan yesterday, I found about eight questions still pending responses. They included parent engagement, pupil learning loss, and increased services for the very hard to serve. These are pretty major areas and I hope we have another opportunity to address the completed plan and the district's response before it's finalized and voted on by the Board. In the plan, there's a request for a description of the aspects of the LCP that were influenced by specific stakeholder input. This item is critical because it shows that the district did listen to parents and concern stakeholders and that not only did you listen, you incorporated changes as a result. I see no strategy to engage parents who do not speak English and not just when students are absent from school, but we already know that Area 2, which is home to many Kamai and Spanish-speaking parents, has the lowest response rate to the many surveys that the district has sent out. Many families will need one-on-one assistance when aiding their children and to have an open channel to provide you with adequate feedback. The district states that LBUSD has partnered with nonprofit organizations such as HUMAN, IT, to provide the digital resources needed. They apparently have access to hard-to-find, low-cost internet plans, which is great. Will they be providing one-on-one tech support for parents and students or is the district going to be providing much of this needed service? Today, I called a Spanish-speaking parent and she indicated that she could not talk to me because she had messages from over 30 parents who wanted information on how to get their children online and mostly questions about Zoom. The district says, "In identifying Canvas as part of its technology solution, we have focused on universal access to devices and connectivity for all pupils." Focus does not indicate a plan. It would be great to know that there is a plan to provide universal access to devices and connectivity. I think we could start with giving every student a hotspot. With locating low-cost internet, you get what you pay for. Parents who have three or four students online and other devices and parents working from home slows down access or they may be unable to get on because it does not work in certain areas with low bandwidth or with slow internet speed. Will the district provide flexibility when measuring pupil participation, especially with the younger grades? I hope the district can provide alternate arrangements to satisfy participation requirements for our youngest and hardest to serve. The plan needs to address pupil learning loss that results from COVID-19. The district realizes that learning loss, especially for those with disabilities and language issues and those already that are starting behind, that the effects are long-term. As a result, we need a long-term plan and need to know that the district will not give up on our children in the next two to five years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Letitia, after Mariela, we have Kim Tibari.
My name is Mariela Salgado, District Community Advisory Committee member, Parks and Parks Commissioner, and more importantly, parent to a kindergartner and a second grader. I'm here with a group of community leaders and stakeholders. Four of us will be presenting recommendations. Yesterday, we made a Herculean effort collectively to log on 70,000 students, one of which we expected technical difficulties, and applaud every teacher and parent for trying. For some, it was smooth; for others, like myself, I was disconnected a handful of times. And unfortunately for some, it went nowhere because their Chrome rooms failed or couldn't connect. While it caused frustration for many, I'd like to think we all anticipated some technical difficulties in which I know you are all working hard to ameliorate. My concern today and has been for months now has been for that 20% who didn't log on after May. The students who are waiting for a hotspot because the 1,000 hotspots you included in the Learning Continuity Plan, LCP, ran out, one which we've known long before today. At a school site I serve in West Long Beach, less than half of our teacher-students logged on. We've known for weeks, if not months, we'd be distant learning and unsure who failed to ensure every student had a device and connection in time. We can do better. I've read the LCP a few times and hope you will listen. Although the LCP references that its expenditures will include building the capacity of staff to support families, this is too vague. As a teacher I spoke with, parents need help logging on. I, for once, spent 30 minutes trying to log on to Epic for my second grader today. The LCP should include a detailed plan on how it will deliver their support under the Access to Devices and Connectivity section, and the expenditures should list specific staff that will be deployed for this purpose, such as instructional aides, community liaisons, and/or technical support personnel. The LCP should also identify how to prioritize tech outreach and support to families that face the most inequities in educational access, such as Black families, English learners, homeless students, students with disabilities, and our foster youth. And for those who haven't logged on, the LCP should be amended to allocate funds to provide hotspots to every child enrolled in the district, as other districts have done. As I said, I have a five-year-old and it pains me to see her attempt to focus for longer than 30 minutes. In our home, we were a no-screen family. For parents with special needs, they rely on school to provide an educational and recreational resources to support their children. Their work cannot, I imagine, translate online, so I ask you to give us the flexibility for independent studies and outdoor learning. Some of us don't have the luxury to supervise their work all day. I am privileged to supervise them when it comes at an expense, but how many of our kids are being supervised by siblings? Our kids' success relies on our ability to adapt and be flexible, so provide curriculum that provides flexibility. We recommend that pupil participation be measured flexibly when parents deem the amount of screen time is ineffective for a student and that alternate arrangements be made to satisfy participation requirements. Lastly, the LCP section on assessing student learning loss and measuring is blank. It remains blank today. The district is required to conduct the learning loss assessment to determine differentiated levels of support for students, to facilitate community conversations about equity and include stakeholders as a part of the solution. Thank you.
That's time. Thank you. After Kim is Jerleene. Yeah, Jerleene Tatum.
Good evening, Board members and staff. I am representing Black Lives Matter Long Beach and Black students with low academic rating. As many of you are aware, 60% of our Black students are failing in ELA and 71% are failing in math. So, unlike some Board members, I am unapologetic about the failure of our Black students and wanting to see change. But today, I want to speak to the practice of cultivating meaningful engagement and social-emotional learning for all students, centering Black and Brown students in particular. And so, my three, item 15, and so my three recommendations are as such from the LCAP group that I'm part of. The first is to remove School Attendance Review Board, SARB, from the list of tiered interventions to address attendance in the LCP. SARB is a punitive approach that can be very traumatic for students and their families. Consideration should be given to the additional barriers that Black and Brown families, students, face to engage in distant learning. So, the district should only rely on effective, restorative, and asset-based approaches in cases of chronic absentee. Second, mandate the social-emotional learning strategies that are listed in the LCP for every lesson plan at every school and set up a system for monitoring implementation. And third is about increasing support with the Family Resource Centers. These resource centers serve as a source of counseling for select students and families. However, it is unclear whether these resource centers will be expanded to be available to all students in any school prioritizing Black and Brown student needs. There is a need for clarification and, if necessary, increase in staffing at these resource centers to ensure that mental health and social-emotional well-being services are available to all students during the 2021 academic year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to ask a COVID-related question. I'm wondering, is it possible for the next meetings that there are agendas available for the public that come? Because there's parents that come that don't have access to printing out the agendas and a lot of times, they don't know what agenda items they're here to speak on exactly. They don't remember from looking at it. I know that was a requirement when you had open meetings. I was told that because the meetings aren't open, that there's no paper available. And so, I'm just wondering if as a COVID-related request, if we can have copies of the agenda at the front? The woman told me that we can't share one because of COVID, so maybe make 20 copies, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the suggestion. After Jerleene, we have Angelica Salazar.
My name is Jerleene Tatum. I am a Long Beach Unified School District parent. To begin, I just want to acknowledge the horns going on outside. I'm sure by now you all know those are CSCE members out there. And I know, as a parent of Long Beach Unified, I'm grateful for the services that they provide to our school and our community. I am number three of four stakeholders and parents that are giving some recommendations and input on the LCP that is going to be talked about tonight. Effective Practices to Cultivate Meaningful Parent Engagement, that's my topic. The LCP does not describe family engagement or multilingual communication with families who do not speak English. The section on pupil and family engagement and outreach focuses exclusively on student re-engagement when students have been absent from school. It is crucial that the LCP discuss how district and school site staff plan to communicate and engage with families via electronic and traditional methods and in multiple languages, including English, Spanish, and Kamai. Outreach plans should include a staffing structure that allows for follow-up and reassessment of communication strategies when response rates are low, and should include home visits to engage families who are harder to reach with appropriate staff who are trusted by families. Many families need one-on-one help to successfully connect to learning platforms. The community engagement process to develop the LCP has not been meaningful or intentional. However, the district still has an opportunity to rely on the expertise of the community to inform an evolving budget and pandemic school implementation for 2021 by holding virtual focus groups, open town halls, and budget study sessions. These efforts should target Black and Brown parents for meaningful participation to assess and address the ongoing and emerging needs of parents. A recommendation, a concrete way to commit to ongoing stakeholder engagement is to create and fund a structure for multi-stakeholder teams that includes students, families, teachers, principals, and staff, central, or central staff, to problem-solve issues related to the implementation of distance learning and the LCP. This community accountability structure can be and should be described and included in the LCP. As a parent whose child started virtual learning yesterday, the last couple days has been full of lots of tears and frustration. So, please, as you make your decisions, please be mindful that there's real people on the other side of those screens. Thank you.
Thank you.
After her.
And she's the only one, yeah.
Good evening, LBUSD School Board members and executive staff. My name is Angelica Salazar at the Children's Defense Fund California, a national, regional, and local children's advocacy organization. I have been partnering with and supporting Long Beach parents, like the ones you just heard from, during this difficult time to review and provide feedback on the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, or LCP. Thank you for the labor that this endeavor has and will still require. We know it is difficult to care for the individualized needs of over 70,000 students during a pandemic. This is why we also have tried to partner with you and to do the hard work and make the difficult changes that are necessary for Black families, immigrant families, and low-income families of color, to have a meaningful voice in shaping their educational experience in LBUSD. Overall, our view is that LBUSD failed to meaningfully engage parents in the LCP development process. My partners have given you some feedback on this and we have explained further in a letter that many of you have received this afternoon. For us, the proof is in that we have yet to see recommendations from the community in the LCP. In fact, the LCP sections for summarizing feedback provided by specific stakeholder groups and describing aspects of the LCP that were influenced by specific stakeholder input are still both missing. We were also disappointed that the section on increased or improved services for foster youth, English learners, and low-income students, and other sections were also missing. We don't truly have an opportunity to provide feedback during this public hearing on an LCP that is still pending in a lot of ways. Still, our group has tried. We have been advocating for meaningful engagement in the budget since June at the first public hearing on the budget. Back then, we heard that there would be a robust process throughout the summer to look at the budget, which was very much still a work in progress. So, on June 10th, we sent you suggestions for meaningful parent engagement. On July 31st, you communicated our concerns with the community engagement timeline and your public engagement process. Then, we met with staff to discuss these concerns on August 6th and followed up with concrete suggestions on how to make LCP engagement meaningful in the short time available. Despite these efforts, LBUSD has continued to give minimal attention to meaningful community engagement that goes beyond virtual methods. We have yet to hear the voices of the families, students, and educators who are directly impacted by the district's educational decisions through a two-way dialogue, sustained outreach, and transparency in the LCP. We are here again today because we will not give up. We are nervous about risking our health and the health of our families to be here in person, but this is also essential work. We urge you to move the budget vote later in September, complete a full LCP draft, and share it with the community, and hold a final public hearing later in September, like September 16th. We also hope to see our recommendations adopted in the next version of the LCP. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the online submissions.
We do. The first four are in Spanish, so she will read them out for us. The first one is from Guillermina Cruz. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Guillermina Cruz, miembro de Latinos en Action. Tengo dos estudiantes de high school. Estoy enviando este correo electrónico para recordarles que cada estudiante tiene derecho a no solo tener su dispositivo Chromebook, sino que también tengan conexión de internet adecuada durante el aprendizaje en casa. Aunque el LCP identifica un número de Chromebooks y hotspots que se han distribuido y tienen plan para proveer tecnología, la realidad es que el distrito no tiene hotspots y muchos estudiantes no están conectados. Como mi hijo, hoy tuvo bastante problema para poder entrar y los sacaban del Zoom y perdió clases. Además, quiero pedir que evalúen a los estudiantes para que se den cuenta del aprendizaje que perdieron y empiecen a ver cómo van a ayudarlos con programas que puedan recuperar lo que perdieron. Así que pido que el LCP debe ser enmendado para proveer más fondos para que haya un hotspot para cada estudiante inscrito en el distrito, como en los otros distritos que se han invertido en los hotspots. Good afternoon. My name is Guillermina Cruz, member of Latinos en Action. I have two high school students. I am sending this email to remind you that every student is entitled to not only have their device, Chromebook, but also to have a proper internet connection during their learning at home. Although the LCP identifies a number of Chromebooks and hotspots that have been distributed and they have plans to provide technology, the reality is that the district has no hotspots and many students are not connected, just like my son. He had a lot of trouble getting in and he was being kicked out of Zoom and he missed classes. I would also like to ask that you evaluate the students so that you realize the learning that they lost and begin to consider how you are going to help them with programs to make up for what they lost. Therefore, I am asking that the LCP be amended to provide more funding for hotspots for every student enrolled in the district, like the other districts that have invested in hotspots. Thank you. The second email is from Marta Cota. Buenas tardes, superintendente y miembros del Board. Mi nombre es Marta Cota de Latinos en Action, abuela de dos estudiantes en el distrito. A pesar que el proceso para la participación de la comunidad no ha sido significativo o intencional, el distrito todavía tiene la oportunidad para aprender sobre la experiencia de la comunidad e integrar sus recomendaciones al presupuesto y a la implementación del aprendizaje durante esta pandemia en 2020-2021. Esto se puede lograr por medio de grupos de enfoques virtuales, juntas públicas abiertas, y sesiones de estudio del presupuesto. Estos esfuerzos deben enfocarse en los padres afroamericanos y latinos para participación significativa y para evaluar y abordar las necesidades de los padres. Una idea específica sería, por ejemplo, un compromiso a la participación comunitaria con la implementación de una estructura con diferentes grupos interesados, incluyendo estudiantes, familias, maestros, directores, y otro personal del distrito para resolver problemas relacionados con el aprendizaje en casa y el LCP. Esta estructura debe permitir el rendimiento de cuentas y debe ser incluido en el LCP. Otra cosa que deben considerar es que no solo es importante tener un aparato y una conexión de internet, es crucial que el distrito provea asistencia individual a las familias para ayudarlos a eliminar las barreras con las que se han encontrado al intentar tener acceso a las clases virtuales. Aunque el LCP dice que habrá fondos para cultivar más capacidad del personal para apoyar a las familias, a eso le falta detalle. El LCP debe incluir un plan detallado sobre cómo se proporcionará apoyo en la sección de acceso a los dispositivos y a la conectividad, y los gastos deben consistir de una lista específica de lo que se proveerá, tal como ayuda a test de instrucción, trabajadores comunitarios, y otra asistencia técnica. Gracias. En solidaridad, Marta Cota.
Good afternoon, superintendent and Board members. My name is Marta Cota of Latinos en Action, grandmother of two students in the district. Although the process of community involvement has not been meaningful or intentional, the district still has the opportunity to learn about the community experience and integrate its recommendations into the budget and implementation of learning during this pandemic in 2020-2021. This can be accomplished through virtual focus groups, open public meetings, and budget study sessions. These efforts should focus on African-American and Latino parents for meaningful participation and for assessing and addressing parent needs. A specific idea would be, for example, a commitment to community involvement by implementing a structure with different stakeholder groups, including students, families, teachers, principals, and other district staff to solve problems related to home learning and the LCP. This structure should allow for accountability and should be included in the LCP. Another thing to consider is that not only is it important to have a device and an internet connection, it is crucial that the district provide individual assistance to families to help them remove the barriers they have encountered in trying to access virtual classrooms. Although the LCP says that there will be funding to cultivate more staff capacity to support families, this lacks detail. The LCP should include a detailed plan for how support will be provided in the Access to Devices and Connectivity section, and expenses should consist of a specific list of what will be provided, such as instructional assistance and community workers and other technical assistance. Thank you. This email is from Juana Castellanos. Mi nombre es Juana Castellanos, madre de tres estudiantes y miembro de Latinos en Action. Quiero darles mi punto de vista con respeto al LCP, el cual no describe comunicación multilingüe con ni el involu-
el cual no describe comunicación multilingüe con el involucramiento de aquellas familias que no hablan inglés. La sección llamada "Comunicación e integración de alumnos y familias" se enfoca exclusivamente en los estudiantes cuando están ausentes. Es crucial que el LCP describa cómo el distrito y el personal de las escuelas se comunicarán o cómo involucrarán a las familias efectivamente usando métodos tradicionales y electrónicos con los padres en inglés, español, y cambollano. LBUSD debe hacer seguimiento y reevaluar estrategias de comunicación cuando las familias no responden, y visitar a las familias que han sido más difíciles de alcanzar con personal apropiado y que son de confianza de la familia. Muchas familias necesitan ayuda individual para conectarse a las plataformas de aprendizaje con éxito. Espero consideren acerca de esta sección. Gracias, Juana Castellanos.
My name is Juana Castellanos, mother of three students and member of Latinos in Action. I want to give you my point of view regarding the LCP, which does not describe multilingual communication with or involvement of those families who do not speak English. The section called "Communication and Integration of Students and Families" focuses exclusively on students when they are absent. It is crucial that the LCP describe how the district and school staff will communicate or engage families effectively using traditional and electronic methods with parents in English, Spanish, and Cambodian. LBUSD should follow up and reevaluate communication strategies when families are unresponsive and visit families who have been most difficult to reach with appropriate staff and who are trusted by the family. Many families need individual assistance to connect to the learning platform successfully. I hope you will consider this section. Thank you, Juana Castellanos.
This email is from Susana Louviano. Mi nombre es Susana Louviano, miembro de Latinos in Action. Tengo estudiantes en este distrito, un hijo de educación especial. Entre las dificultades de la conexión de internet, la falta de asistencia individual a las familias, y todo lo que conlleva a poder tener las clases virtuales, todavía como madre de mi niño especial estoy lidiando con que mi hijo no tuvo los servicios adecuados para él. Y por lo que veo tampoco están considerando darnos tiempo compensatorio, y creo que es lo menos que pueden hacer para nuestros niños especiales y los padres. Algo más es que el LCP también deben identificar cuáles serán las prioridades para dar estos servicios y apoyo a las familias más afectadas por la falta de equidad, como los estudiantes afroamericanos, aprendices de inglés, estudiantes desamparados, estudiantes de educación especial, y estudiantes en hogar de crianza. Espero consideren mi comentario y petición. Muchas gracias a todos, Susana Louviano.
My name is Susana Louviano, a member of Latinos in Action. I have students in this district, a special education child. Between the difficulties of the internet connection, the lack of individual assistance to families, and all that comes with being able to have the virtual classes, still, as a mother of my special child, I am dealing with the fact that my child did not have the right services for him. And as far as I can see, they are not considering giving us compensatory time either. And I think that is the least they can do for our special children and parents. One more thing is that the LCP must also identify what the priorities will be for providing these services and support to the families most affected by the inequity, such as African-American students, English learners, homeless students, special education students, and foster care students. I hope you will consider my comments and requests. Thank you very much to all of you, Susana Louviano.
This is from Sarah Nakarato. I am writing as a concerned member of the Long Beach community. All three of my children have attended Long Beach Public Schools. During these unprecedented times, it is imperative that our community focus our resources on our most vulnerable. This is especially true for children in our education system who may face additional hardships. The LCP must address how it will meet the needs of English learners, children in foster care, and homeless children. Furthermore, as the district has been guaranteed funds for the year regardless of attendance, it is imperative that any programs directed towards truancy or digital truancy be supportive in nature and intent and not punitive. We do not need truancy in this pandemic to be a further extension of the school-to-prison pipeline. I look forward to hearing how the district will support the most vulnerable among us. Thank you, Sarah.
This following email is from Anna Lara. Buenas tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Anna Lara, miembro de Latinos in Action, madre de tres estudiantes. Mi comentario es el número 15 sobre la sección del LCP sobre la pérdida de aprendizaje del alumno. Está en blanco. El distrito está obligado a evaluar la pérdida de aprendizaje para determinar los diferentes niveles de apoyo para los estudiantes. Para poder tener conversaciones con la comunidad sobre la equidad, recomendamos que LBUSD publique un análisis sistemático de esta evaluación y un plan para apoyar a estudiantes con servicios y programas para que los estudiantes se recuperen de la pérdida del aprendizaje este año y en el futuro. Ahorita estoy pasando tiempos de mucha preocupación, ya que por mi error mi hija, estudiante del 7º grado, quedó en el sistema híbrido y ahora no sé cómo cambiarla al sistema de aprendizaje a distancia completamente en casa. Porque no podré llevar a mi niña a la merosco porque tengo dos estudiantes más en elementary que están en línea en sus clases. Les agradecería si alguien de ustedes me puede ayudar a cambiar a mi niña para que todas estén en la enseñanza a distancia, porque se me dificulta para llevar una a la escuela y no tengo con quién encargar mis otras dos hijas. Les agradezco su atención. Respectuosamente, Anna Lara.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Anna Lara, member of Latinos in Action, mother of three students. My comment is number 15 in the LCP in regards to the loss of student learning. It is blank. The district is obligated to evaluate loss of learning to determine the different levels of support for the students. To be able to have a conversation with the community about equity, we are recommending that the LBUSD publish a systematic analysis of this evaluation and a plan to support students with services and programs so that they are able to recuperate the learning loss in this year and in the future. Right now, I am going through a very worrisome time because due to my error, my 7th grade student was placed in a hybrid system. And now, I do not know how to change her to the distance learning completely at home. Because I will not be able to take her to middle school since I have two more students in elementary that will be online in their classes. I would appreciate if one of you can help me change my daughter to learning online. This way, they are all distance learning. Because it would be difficult for me to take her to school since I do not have anybody else to take care of my other daughters. I thank you for your attention. Respectfully, Anna Lara.
This next email is by María Samudio. Mi nombre es María Samudio, miembro de Latinos in Action, madre de tres estudiantes en el distrito. Gracias por considerar a los padres que enviamos los comentarios por este medio. Quiero aprovechar esta audiencia pública donde hoy discuten el borrador del LCP. Por cierto, me preocupa que pronto llegue el día de votar para la mesa directiva y me pregunto, ¿será que ustedes realmente escucharán las peticiones y recomendaciones que pedimos? ¿Votarán por las necesidades más urgentes de los estudiantes y los padres? Porque hay dos secciones de el LCP que están en blanco. Una sobre la participación y progreso de estudiantes. Recomendamos que la participación de estudiantes se mida con flexibilidad cuando los padres determinen que la cantidad de tiempo enfrente de una pantalla deja de ser eficaz para un estudiante, y que se busque una alternativa para que el estudiante cumpla con los requisitos de la asistencia y participación. Y la otra sobre la pérdida de aprendizaje del alumno está en blanco. Ustedes saben que el distrito está obligado a evaluar la pérdida de aprendizaje para determinar los diferentes niveles de apoyo para los estudiantes. Estaré muy atenta al día de las votaciones, esperando voten en beneficio de los estudiantes. Con respeto, María Samudio.
My name is María Samudio, member of Latinos in Action, mother of three students in the district. Thank you for considering the parents who send their comments through this avenue. I want to take advantage of this public hearing where today the LCP draft is being discussed. By the way, I am worried that the day of voting for the board will come soon, and I wonder if you will really listen to the requests and recommendations we are asking. Will you vote for the most urgent needs of the students and parents? Because there are two sections of the LCP that are blank. One about the student's participation and progress. We recommend that the student's participation be measured with flexibility when the parents determine that the amount of time in front of the screen is no longer effective for a student, and that an alternative is sought for the student to meet the attendance and participation requirements. And the other one regarding pupil learning loss is blank. You are aware that the district is required to evaluate the learning loss to determine the different levels of support for the students. I will be very attentive to the day of voting. I hope that you will vote in benefit of the students. Respectfully, María Samudio.
The next email is from Keri Kubatanaka. Good afternoon. My name is Keri Kubatanaka, and I want to comment about the item number 15 in the agenda. I understand we are in unprecedented circumstances, and we are all learning and working together to help our kids to succeed on these online classes. It has been hard to most all of us, and we still need to work a lot to understand all this situation. My concerns mostly is about our special day class. How is it, how is being managed right now by our CDC teachers? I know they are trying their best, but I think they need more support of the district, especially how to focus on the schedules of our students. Be more than three hours in front of the screen is too much. Imagine to be six hours. The district must have a specific plan for these classes because it's getting very frustrating for us parents, but especially for our students. The teachers need much support, orientation, and training because they can't do it alone. Thank you, Keri Kubatanaka.
Buenas tardes, superintendente y miembros de la mesa directiva. Mi nombre es Liliana Espinoza, miembro de Latinos in Action. Tengo un estudiante en el distrito y quiero pedir que el LCP debe identificar cuáles serán las prioridades para dar servicios y apoyos técnicos a las familias más afectadas por la falta de equidad, como los estudiantes afroamericanos, aprendices de inglés, estudiantes desamparados, estudiantes de educación especial, y estudiantes en hogares de crianza. Además, recomendamos que la participación de estudiantes se mida con flexibilidad cuando los padres determinen que la cantidad de tiempo enfrente de una pantalla deja de ser eficaz para un estudiante, y que se busque una alternativa para que el estudiante cumpla con los requisitos de la asistencia y participación. Atentamente, Liliana Espinoza.
Good afternoon, superintendent and board members. My name is Liliana Espinoza, member of Latinos in Action. I have a student in the district, and I want to ask that the LCP identifies what would be the priorities to give services and technical support to the families affected by the lack of equity, like the African-American students, English learners, homeless students, special education students, and foster home students. We also want to recommend that the student's participation be measured with flexibility when the parents determine that the amount of time in front of a screen stops being effective for a student, and to find a way so that the student can still fulfill the requirements for attendance and participation. Attentively, Liliana Espinoza.
Thank you.
My name is Allison Crib, and I have public comment on item number 15 on tonight's agenda. So spent the whole day at home with our kids to understanding, a whole day engaged as a student and teacher. If we are starting on October 5th live, and the LBUSD model says one-on-one supplemental instruction. As a parent that might have to switch from hybrid to in-person because of working, what happens to those students the second half of the day that their teacher needs to teach online? I have been seeing the statement "continuity of instruction" a lot with my engagement in this whole process. Who is teaching the second half of the day for the in-person students? Or is this just babysitting for the recites at sites? Could this be an opportunity for classified employees that work with a student before COVID to be trained and vetted to help inside the online classes now to be prepared for October 5th? This also seems like an opportunity to help engage, engage out students that don't have access to school right now. Even if everything went smooth today, why is there not support for the kids? That's all we have for public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, now we have Robert to come to the podium and speak about this.
Good afternoon, President Craig, members of the board, executive staff, and members of the community. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our commenters who've provided some really helpful feedback for us on the learning continuity and attendance plan, which we acknowledge and of course will help to incorporate to continue to refine the plan as we put it forward to the board. The learning continuity plan, as the board knows, is a new state requirement that addresses the ongoing need for local educational agencies, or LEAs, to formally plan for the 2020-21 school year in the midst of the uncertainty caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. On this slide I provided the link to the CDE website that details further what the requirements of the plan are. And as the board knows as well, this is an initiative that we've aligned with a couple of efforts here in the district. The first is the School Opening and Safety Plan. This plan is available on LBschools.net, as I will show in a couple of slides. And it's a parent-friendly document that highlights the key strategies, actions, and services that the district is providing in alignment with the learning continuity plan. And I highlight it in this particular case because when people see the School Opening and Safety Plan, we want everyone to understand that they're also seeing the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. It's a localized version of what we are required to present to the California Department of Education and the Los Angeles County Office of Education through the Learning Continuity Plan. The other is the Budget Engagement Framework. As the board knows, the district embarked on an effort to ensure that we engage stakeholders in a variety of different activities to collect their feedback, their ideas, to inform not only the Learning Continuity Plan but also budget efforts during the 2020-21 school year as well as future planning purposes. And we highlight this framework here in this particular case because all of the activities related to the Learning Continuity Plan are in alignment with what we're doing with the budget engagement process. Everything from the Thought Exchange Survey that we've put out to stakeholders, the community forums that we've scheduled, and the district and community stakeholder group meetings and committee meetings that have been provided, all of which present information to the Superintendent's Advisory Committee that enables the board then to have some information from stakeholders that will inform all of our planning efforts here in the district. And that planning efforts can And that planning efforts can as well inform the Learning Continuity Plan, which is why all of these efforts are aligned here in the district. For the public's sake, I wanted to highlight how these three efforts kind of align themselves just on our district website. So if members of the public go to lbschools.net, they'll find the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan under Local Control, the School Opening and Safety Plan under the Coronavirus Response Section, and the Budget Engagement Thought Exchange Survey at the very bottom. As it relates to the timeline, so the template for the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan was released on August 1. On August 12, we convened the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, which provided helpful feedback that, again, informed the budget engagement process, but also the Learning Continuity Plan. For example, one of the key considerations that was presented to the district was the idea of ensuring that there's a way for members of the community to be able to provide feedback that is non-written in form. So in addition to the Budget Engagement Thought Exchange Survey that was provided to stakeholders, we also created a Budget Engagement Hotline in which parents, members of the community can call to provide feedback that informs this plan. And that was a recommendation made by a member of the Superintendent Advisory Committee, and we're very thankful for that feedback. Then August 17 and 18, we launched our Thought Exchange Survey and then convened a board workshop in which we described how the Learning Continuity Plan aligned with efforts surrounding the budget engagement process. Come August 21, we released the preliminary draft of the plan, then met with the two critical groups that are required by the ed code to inform the plan, namely, the District English Learner Advisory Committee and the District Community Advisory Committee. We held those meetings last week and received a lot of great feedback that matches some of the other ideas that were presented by members of the community at this public hearing today. So again, we thank all of the stakeholders for providing their input. And then here is the September 2nd, we've got our public hearing. And then for the board's consideration, the next meeting would be September 16. But ultimately, the deadline for the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan would be on September 30, submitted to the Los Angeles County Office of Education. I've highlighted two specific sections here to indicate where there is alignment between the budget engagement process and specifically the Learning Continuity Plan. This slide summarizes the sections, the main sections of the Learning Continuity Plan, and we've broken them down by the main themes associated with the budget engagement process. The first is the idea of community, and you heard some of the feedback today around the importance of stakeholder engagement and ensuring that the community input has been provided. Some sections of the stakeholder engagement piece, as was mentioned by members of the community, are still in development, and it is in part because we're collecting feedback from stakeholders and ensuring that it gets incorporated into the plan. So that we didn't want to put items in that section of the plan that would go ahead of where stakeholders are asking us to consider. The middle sections of the Learning Continuity Plan relate to academic support, social-emotional learning, and student engagement and motivation. Those are specifically aligned, again, with the guiding questions that drive the work that we're doing with our budget engagement process. The academic support component is related to a section in the Learning Continuity Plan on continuity of learning. In that section, you'll find the district's plan for, ultimately, when we go back to in-person instruction. It also includes the district's current plan around distance learning, all of which, again, mirror what parents can find in the School Opening and Safety Plan. Social-emotional learning is fairly self-explanatory. There's a one-in-one alignment between what we have been discussing with stakeholder groups in the budget engagement process and with the mental health and social-emotional well-being component of the Learning Continuity Plan. And that section summarizes presentations that had been given to the board earlier in the month of August, as well as what the board had received in an update during the August workshop. And then the last piece there is the Student Engagement and Motivation Guiding Question that aligns with pupil and family engagement and outreach in school nutrition. So there you'll find, for example, efforts that the district has made to ensure that families are connected and engaged in distance learning. Just most recently, on Monday night, for example, we had members of our parent university team here in the district office holding extended hours to ensure that families were connected and prepared for the first day of school. We did that as well early on Tuesday morning to ensure that families had support to get online and access our Canvas learning management system. So I want to thank the cross-departmental team that helped to continue to support this effort and are working alongside our school sites to ensure that students have connectivity. Naturally, there are still many issues for the district to deal with and cope with as it relates to ensuring engagement, but we're very grateful for the feedback that stakeholders have provided to ensure that we have a full and robust plan. And then the last part of the Learning Continuity Plan relates to sections that are familiar to those who have read the Local Control and Accountability Plan. These are specific efforts and actions that are intended to increase or improve services for foster youth, English learners, and low-income students. And that is in alignment with the theme of equity and excellence that governs the School Opening and Safety Plan. There, in that section, you'll find details related to the Summer Seal Program that was established to ensure that we are proactive about addressing learning loss issues, work that's being done by our Foster Youth Unit and our Homeless Education Program, efforts around English learner support and English language development, and additional efforts around what the Family Resource Centers and other support staff have been providing to ensure that our neediest and most vulnerable groups are being supported. Lastly, I wanted to highlight just next steps for the public. So right now, the Learning Continuity Plan is available on lbschools.net as I highlighted a couple of slides ago. There, members of the public can review the draft and also continue to submit public comments to us until September 9, 2020. That way, we can continue to incorporate and collect feedback. There's a form there that members of the public can use in order to continue to drive this plan forward. There's also an opportunity on lbschools.net to continue to participate in our Thought Exchange Survey. There, it will ask prompts around academic support, social-emotional learning, and student engagement and motivation. Up to this point, we've already collected over 3,300 responses from stakeholders and thousands more in terms of engagement that helps to highlight some of the key considerations and issues that are important for our stakeholders, and I've already begun to incorporate those into our plan. And then lastly, as mentioned, based on feedback from a member of the Superintendent Advisory Committee, for those who feel more comfortable providing voice feedback to the district, they can leave a message on the Budget Engagement Hotline. It's available here at 562-248-6867. And again, this is another way for members of the community to provide feedback to ensure that those who may not have access to a mobile device or some other electronic means or just feel more comfortable speaking in their preferred language can leave a message, and it can be part of our stakeholder engagement process alongside the development of this plan.
Thank you, Robert. I'd like to acknowledge the thousands of community members who have provided input to this plan and the many staff members across departments that have worked on the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. I also just want to express to our community the value that we place on feedback from the community and to acknowledge that we would like to hold another public hearing with the second draft of the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan on September 16, which will also require that if we hold that second public hearing, that we schedule another meeting before the end of September to finalize and approve the plan in September, before the deadline of September 30.
That's great, Dr. Baker. I would support that highly, given that community engagement during this pandemic has presented challenges. Folks have been probably concentrated on starting school yesterday.
Yes.
Given that the plan is still in draft form, so there's still an opportunity here to get input. And given that this plan is to support our most vulnerable and highest-need students, so is that something that we need to take action on to add another meeting?
Not at this time. We'll put it on the agenda to add a meeting at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so thank you for everybody. Are we done on that item then? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for working on that. Next, we have Agenda Items for Separate Action or Adoption of Agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to move that we move item number 24, Public Comment Procedures at Board Meeting, up and let it follow item 19, Public Testimony on Items Listed on the Agenda.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
So to put it before Staff Report?
Yes.
One member by?
Uh huh. Right after item 19, Public Testimony on Items Listed on the Agenda.
Okay. So then we would be voting on the agenda with a correction, moving item number 24 right under item number 19?
19.
Okay. Any for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we will do that. We will move that item number 24. I'll scoot that up. Okay. Was there a question?
Yeah. Sorry, that caught me off guard, so I'm thinking. Do we have public, do we have folks outside who are giving testimony on non-agendized items?
Yes.
We do. So what we have done the last couple of meetings is we have moved the public testimony on items not on the agenda ahead of the staff report. Looks like we have two staff reports tonight that might be more involved in terms of conversation. Do we also need to look at moving public testimony on non-agendized items to before our staff report so that they're not standing outside? I mean, I know it's not hot, but they've also been out there for an hour already, so.
Right. Right. Okay.
You want to make a motion, board member, to do that?
Do we need a motion to do that, Brent? To re-amend the agenda? Okay, so I move that we amend the agenda again to move public testimony on items not listed on the agenda ahead of the staff report.
But after?
And after unfinished business of public comment.
Yes.
My second.
Discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. So we move number 21 just after 24. Before 20.
Which is after 19.
Okay. Approval of minutes.
So move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Communications? We have none. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda? And we have one. Yes, and so that's Caesar.
Just one?
Yeah, we have one for items listed on the agenda, but we have several for.
Do we know how many emails we have, Madam Chair? On items listed on the agenda?
Listed on the agenda, we have zero.
Okay.
Yeah, zero.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So let's see, let's see. So this is, my name is Cesar Manderas. I live next to Wilson High, zip code 90804. This is a comment regarding the public comment part of the agenda today. I really do get the sense that everyone here wants to hear from the public and wants to hear from parents and wants to hear from students in the community because that is one of the best ways to understand what the needs are for the kids. And so today, I again ask you, I know I came here for the last board meeting, but I ask you to increase, rather than decrease, the direct access that the public has to the board and the staff. I know in the agenda, the description, it had mentioned that when people give comments, it's for the board to hear and not necessarily the public. What I would say, what I would add to that is that when we make comments, it's not only for the board, but it's also for the staff. Because even if we just sent letters or emails to the board, the staff don't really get to see that, at least that's my impression. And so I think it's important for the staff, who oftentimes are the people who help craft policy and oftentimes, and the people who implement the policy, for them to hear what the needs are of the kids when they come out and either speak in mic or call in, or whether the emails get read out loud. what, it's in that spirit that I want this space to continue to be open and accessible. So I know the decision today could be to get rid of reading the emails out loud. And if that does happen, I hope that it is only done if it is replaced with the phone-in or call-in option. That way, there is no, again, decrease in the access that people have to the board and the staff. So again, to repeat that, if you do decide to stop reading the emails out loud, then only do so, please, if you also implement the phone-in option at the same time. And with that, I also just want to give a shout out to Letitia, Joy, and Lori. Without you, we literally would not have a voice. I know there are a lot of people at home that are still afraid to come out. And so thank you so much for everything you have done. And if we instill the phone-in option later on and we don't get to hear your voice again, I just want to say that we really, really appreciate all three of you for the work that you have done during this pandemic. So I hope that you never get to read those racist, sexist, or anti-LGBTQ statements because I know that can't be easy, but thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you. Okay. We do have, no. We don't have any online submissions for public testimony listed on the agenda. But now we're going to go to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. And we have 11 people here in person. Yes? Okay, we have 11 people here in person, and we have a stack of.
19, I believe.
19 online submissions. So how do we want to?
Madam Chair, may I clarify?
Yes.
Have we gone down to public testimony and items not listed on the agenda?
That's where we're at now.
Well, we skipped Staff Report.
Well, we did.
And we skipped my motion to move 24 up to follow 19.
We didn't skip Staff Report? We moved Staff Report. But the original motion was to move the public comment procedure at board meetings next on the agenda.
Yeah, the reason we moved. Yeah, the reason we moved, I know it's a little confusing, because we moved two things.
Okay.
But the reason we moved the public testimony on items not listed on the agenda is because we have people standing outside.
Okay.
So we're going to have those people speak before we get to item number 24, which we also put above the Staff Report.
Okay.
Is that good?
So, Madam Chair, what you actually voted to do was to do number 24, which is unfinished business, and then to do number 21, non-agenda items, and then to do Staff Report, which means that your next item now would be the unfinished business.
That's what I thought.
So that's how you voted?
Okay, yep.
Feel free amongst yourselves to change that again, but that's how you voted.
Okay.
So we are on item 24, Madam Chair?
We are. We are on item 24. I stand corrected. So we will continue with that item. So I will just start by saying that at our last board meeting, when we spoke about public comment, it was decided that we would explore the possibility of accepting telephonic public comment. And so we tasked our staff, or challenged our staff, to look into that. So now I'm going to introduce our Assistant Director of Marketing and Media Services, Mr. Chris Itzen, to tell us about the information he gathered as soon as he gets our tech issues worked out. But he's going to tell us about the information he gathered on possibly accepting telephone public comments at our meetings. So we will wait to hear.
A point of clarification, if I may.
Yes.
The recommendation, which we failed to vote on last time, and the reason I wanted it moved up, states that it is recommended that the Board of Education return to its regular practice of having public comments submitted through in-person testimony at future meetings, as its current practice, all written public testimony submitted to the Board of Education, will also continue to be provided to the Board by the Secretary of the Board and made part of the public record. The purpose of the public comment requirement is to address the Board itself, not to address the public generally. That's what I hope we can vote on.
Okay, we are going to, we are going to vote on that. It was also an information item. Let me look. But it's also an information item, and part of the information item before we vote is the information on the telephone public comment submissions.
Very good.
Right. So we'll listen to the information first, and then we'll have an opportunity to vote.
Thank you.
On that as it's presented. Mr. Itzen, welcome.
President Craig, distinguished board members, and Superintendent Dr. Baker and executive staff, as requested, our team in collaboration with the IT Department and other central office departments, have been researching modifications, the modalities for public comment for your review. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of what we've done, just for public, because this is a public meeting, and then share a very viable phone option that you may consider. So we all know that this is currently what is in place. It's what we're doing tonight. We have in-person comment with physical distancing protocols in place, email comments read out loud during public comment, and all emails that are not read are provided to the board members for review and as a part of the public record. Some notes, time has been intentionally extended to one hour for comments on the agenda, one hour for non-agenda items during the pandemic, and also, we have translation support that has dramatically expanded, which I'm very excited about tonight, in not only Spanish Kamaai, but also in ASL. So now, looking at a phone system, move to the next slide here. So we reached out to some of our current IT vendors, other agencies, specifically, we looked at what Long Beach City College is doing, what the City of Long Beach is doing, and we really, based on our discussions, we landed on a possible phone-in mode for public testimony. And we looked for the most effective and safest mode to modify our current process if you decide for that, and looking at an alternate call-in option. And so on the left, I'll start with there, what we landed on was a Microsoft Exchange voicemail system, which integrates exactly with our current systems that we already have, and allows for comments to call in and leave a recorded message that can be played during the meeting. It's five lines available for one phone number, so you can have five people calling in at the same time in one number to help not have the system be jammed up. It is a prompt for three minutes of commenting, and then it's stored as an audio file and sent to an assigned email address. So to break it down very basically, I call in, I call into a number, it prompts me and says you have three minutes to provide your testimony. You give your testimony, then that file is saved as an audio file, and then it's sent to an assigned email address, and then it's stored in that. And then, so the next step would be someone, like what Letitia does with the emails, she would then have to sort all of those, listen to every single one of them, decide are they agenda items or non-agenda items, and separate them. Then they would be available on a laptop, like we use for public comment currently with the emails. Then we would just play them one by one. You would hear the public in their actual voice. The estimated cost for service is about $17,000 annually. It's a cloud-based system. It's a little bit cheaper than having something hardwired, but it allows us to have that flexibility. It would have a main telephone number, which would be included in the cost, five backup numbers for simultaneous calls, hosting service, the hosting mailbox. They also would be transcribed, so they would be in text form as well. And the info could be delivered to any LBSD mailbox for future forward, storage, or other delivery. And so that's kind of the basic rundown of how that voicemail system would work. And then from there, some things to just consider. This would provide more access for community members. Those may not have access to the internet. Provides worldwide access, which could dilute community input. So that was one thing when we were brainstorming, discussing, that this is now a phone number that's easily accessible, that anybody can call in. And so if we're getting calls from all over, anywhere, all over the world, all over the country, that may dilute what's happening with our actual constituents being able to call in. It will increase administrative costs in the concept of having somebody to monitor this and separate the system. It's a little bit more of an intensive process. And we did the math, and this is anecdotal, and I'll break it down, but we talked about, so if you had 200 calls at three minutes, you're looking at, I got to remember what I said, like 10 hours of recording. So if somebody's having to listen to that and sort those, that would take a very long time. However, you might not necessarily have to listen to every single message all the way through to sift and sort where it goes, whether it's agenda items or non-agenda items. But it's something to consider, that it will be a little bit more labor-intensive. And then, if a voice messaging option is added to the current process of email and in-person comment, the timeframe would need to be extended, and the modalities would need to be divided. So the other question is, if you were to adopt this mode, would you keep the email and public testimony in person? Would that spread things longer? Or would you replace the email with voicing? So there's a few things to consider there.
Okay, Dr. Benitez.
Actually, are we going to make a motion, move to discussion, or can I ask a question based on the information?
I think you can ask a question based on the information given.
Thank you, Chris. Super helpful. Is there a way to, with the option that you're providing here, allocate a certain amount of time so that you can only call and leave a message during a certain amount of time, so that people aren't calling 24 hours around the clock, because then it defeats the purpose of public comment during the meeting? So as an example, whatever time we have on the agenda, that the line would open up at that time, and that voicemails left at that time would be the ones that we would take in the order that they're received. Using the rationale of what if we get 200 calls, how are we going to be able to sort of sift through those, decide which ones are agenda items or not during our meeting? So I guess, two questions, Chris. First is the time certainty, and the second is sort of by what means could we then make that determination on which calls would get read?
So I think I understand your question. The first piece is, we can make the timeframe whenever we want for the line to be open. The goal would be for it to be prior to the meeting, similar to the email processes.
Correct.
Because, you know, if we did it live, well, it wouldn't be live, but if we did it in person, it'd be too hard to sift. But yes, we could set it up and say, this is when the line opens up, and it closes at 12 o'clock the day of a board meeting. We have, Carplan should do that. That's very, very easy. And then remind me your second piece, just so I make sure I'm clear.
So with that, knowing that, then what we could say is, we would take, if each call, in theory, is three minutes each, we could say, we would take the first, as an example, 20 people that leave a voicemail at that time, if it's an item on the agenda, and the rest of them, we could still get forwarded to us for us to listen, read, if they're able to be transcribed, right?
Absolutely, right. You can set the time of how many are going to be read, and then all of that would be provided to in both audio file or text file, whichever you would prefer.
Thank you.
I had a question as well.
Yes, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you for doing the research on this. I appreciate it. So we have a couple decisions in front of us, so I think before we made a motion, I just wanted to clarify that something we should consider is, are we replacing email with a phone-in system? Which, when I asked for research around a phone-in system, it was to do just that. So staff was not reading emails, but people could be heard in their own voice, because we know the value of someone telling their story or sharing their thoughts with us in their own voice. So we'd have to consider, if we have five people show up in person to do that, do we allocate the rest of the time then for folks to call in? I would imagine that we could make a consideration to extend time as we have on the individual basis. This doesn't take in, this isn't about that. That isn't about necessarily the timeline. That's something that we could look at later. And I lost my second question, so I will defer to my colleague who has one, and queue up again.
Yeah, my concern would be calls that came in and languages that were not English. How will we deal with that?
That is a difficult question. I mean, one workaround, just off the top of my head, would be to have that transcribed, that printed transcription printed out, and then done the same way we just did with email, where you heard it read in Spanish and you heard it read in English. I mean, it is a possibility. So if it came in in Kamaai, we would make sure to print that, get that printed, and then have the Kama interpreter, after it's actually, you hear it, then they would actually come up here and then give you the translation. But it does, I mean, it does cause a challenge.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, I'm old-school, but henceforth, the last 17 years, if a parent wanted to get ahold of me, first of all, I have a listed number. Secondly, that individual could call Letitia, and she would give them my message, and I could call that person back. It just seems to me we're making this so detailed and so convoluted. It almost strikes me, as one educator said, as a form of exaggerated democracy. So that's my piece. I think our recommendation is very simple, and in the past, we have accommodated special needs, extended the time. And I think we should still have that option as we proceed, rather than being highly disciplined into a procedure that you say will only cost $17,000 annually. I bet it's more than double that.
Yeah, the subscription and the technology is where it's $17,000. It could add administrative or labor costs in the sense of somebody who has to sort this, and we're all, we all have.
So let's be careful not to get too mired in all these specific details to cover every single circumstance.
Member Kirk?
Yeah, I'd like actually to make a motion so we can continue some discussion, if that's okay. I have to figure out how to word this. Because it's not the same as the recommendation, actually. I move that we continue to welcome public comment in-person testimony, as we do now. And so obviously, they would come in and say that. I also move that we include an opt-in, an alternative call-in option for this school year in the pandemic, to allow for additional public input in a time when not everybody can get here in person. And I ask that that replace reading emails aloud.
Discussion. Dr. Williams.
Yes, you have two?
I can clarify.
Two motions, or are you going to propose in the form of one motion? Or can you do two motions? I mean?
No, you can't do two motions at the same time.
Well, I.
Yeah, I get the gist of it.
We have in-person testimony, so that isn't changing. What I'm moving then is that we add a call-in option to replace reading emails aloud. So we would still accept emails. They would still be part of the public record, but staff would not be reading emails aloud in meetings. That we would do a call-in option instead.
Okay. Dr. Williams, did you have a further comment on that, or for the discussion?
No, that's the motion.
Yes.
The motion is that we continue in-person comments, and that we also allow for recorded comments that would replace reading emails out loud.
Correct.
I can live with that.
And was that stipulated to be just during this year of pandemic?
Yeah.
And we can review it in a year and see if it was a worthwhile system, but I think especially in a time when people can't get here, it's critical, sorry, when we, I think it's critical this year especially, and we can review it in a year and look at it and see what the data looks like, and if it supports continuing it. But it's critical, I think, this year pandemic-wise, that we have this option.
And I would only ask, do you prefer that to staff's recommendation, which remains ambiguous enough to allow us to make individual changes as needed by the circumstance?
Well, I think having a phone-in option requires a vote for us, so.
Right. I have a couple of concerns about this. On one hand, I like the idea of being able to hear people in their own voices. But on the other hand, with the written, online submissions, they become a matter of public record, and I don't know how we make phone messages a matter of public record. Does anybody can, I don't know, Mr. Itzen, can you address that? Or Brett?
Yeah, so a telephone recorder would be a matter of public record, too. So any member of the public would be allowed to say, I want to get a copy of all of the voicemail phone-ins that came in during the September 2nd meeting. And so we would simply be able to produce to them the electronic record. They're electronic recordings, so they would still be a matter of public record.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Williams.
Yes, the only concern that I would have, and it's not really a major concern, but for callers who call in, I know you talked about this in terms of written comment, but callers who may call in a different language, with recorded messages, we need to have a way to deal with that as well. So.
Dr. Williams, and I think our practice has been, if someone comes in here and says a comment in another language, that we would have interpretation, right? So my expectation would be that we would be provided interpretation, and that we would extend the three minutes of time that it would require for an individual to make public comment, so that we could hear the interpretations. The other piece is, I do want to differentiate for our public, because we have been getting a lot of emails and calls, Board Member Meyer. There is a difference between you calling me or emailing me, and this being part of the public record for public comment, right? There is a difference to that, for you leaving a message at our office or contacting one of the board, that this becomes part of the public record for public comment. So you can still email us and get ahold of us to ask us questions, but that these would be for the public comment for that meeting, for the agenda on that meeting. And that way, we could differentiate between those calls that we're getting for items on the agenda, and those calls that we're getting for items not on the agenda, to differentiate those from the hundreds of emails that we've been getting, right? That you can email us at any time, basically about anything, but that these would be specific to public comment for our meetings, and that the voicemail would be used specifically for that.
Yeah. Okay.
But once again, isn't the purpose of the public comment policy to address board members, not the public?
Yes.
We are policymakers. Yes, that's why I'm saying that, Board Member Meyer.
I agree.
That this isn't an email that anybody can send to us at any time.
Sure.
This is a matter of public comment for the meeting.
For, just for the board, for the broadly.
Correct, correct.
Okay, do we have further discussion?
You know, I think, as I look at this, some of our written comments that we received are repetitious. are repetitious. And, and, and that concerns me because if we only have a certain amount of time that we're allotted, allotting for the comments, and you're filling that time up with comments that are repetitious that say the same thing, that would basically probably prevent someone with a different comment from being able to get in in that time slot. I would be concerned about that.
So are you, are you concerned about telephone message part or the online submission?
I mean, it's all the same when we talk about comment. It's all the same.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say we, we get that anyways, Dr. Williams. Someone, twenty people could come in here and read off the same email or speech.
I'll tell you something, Dr. Benitez, I've been here sixteen years, and I've never seen it to the degree that I've seen it this year. It's been, it's more rampant this year than I've seen it any other time and since I've been on this board. Honestly, so.
Okay.
I think that speaks to the state of our democracy more than anything else. But I think it's important that even if they are repetitious, that they are heard. And I think we all agree that over the last couple of months, we have had instances where we have heard similar comments or the same comments spoken and offered by many people, some that we disagree with vehemently and some that we agree with vehemently. And while difficult to hear, I think it's important for everyone to have the opportunity. It's what we signed up for, to be able to listen, and I think especially in this year when people are really frustrated about needing to be heard and wanting to be heard, I'm willing to do that, so.
Yeah, let me
I look forward to the vote.
Yeah, my, my concern, Member Kerr, was to make sure that we had an opportunity for diversification of, of issues that could come in, not preventing anyone from stating their case.
I think with that, there's, well, I don't think we want to be in a position to monitor the public comment. I think that goes against the, that just goes against everything ethically that we stand for is if we try and, you know, limit or monitor people, that I, I don't think that's a, a good practice to follow. Um, is there any other discussion? No further discussion than, Brent, will you remind us of the motion? Just to, just to make sure that we're clear on what we're voting on?
I think that there were two parts to the motion. The first part was, was to continue and welcome in-person comment. The second was to include an alternative call-in option for this school year only, and that that alternative telephone call-in voicemail feature would replace the emails being read aloud during the meeting. Did I capture that correctly, Member Kerr?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions, it passes four-one. Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I suggest that maybe you have a little bit more work to do on this? I think now you probably need to give staff direction as to how to prioritize those. You will have in-person speakers, and then you're going to have voicemail, and it shouldn't be the staff that has to decide how you're going to prioritize. So if you had thirty minutes, for example, are you going to prioritize those who are here first in person and then fill in with voicemail, or vice versa, or fifty-fifty? It's, it's up to you.
Member Kerr, since it was your motion.
Thank you. I recommend that we prioritize those who are here in person to speak, followed by a phone-in option and, yes, staff.
Okay, is it consensus, is that the consensus of the board? That we prioritize people who are here in, in person for public comment?
I support that, and I just again want to reiterate, this doesn't prevent folks from emailing us or contacting us. We're just talking about the public comment period for our board meetings.
Right.
Yes.
And that the emails would still be part of the public record, even though they aren't read?
Right. Right, they're just not going to be read.
Correct.
Okay, and I would just like to take this opportunity to remind people that the public comment is to inform the board, but it's not to inform the public in general.
That's right.
So I just, I just wanted to add that in there. And so that's what we'll do. We'll give priority to the people who are here in person, which leads me to the people who are here in person. So we will go right to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda, and we'll start with Mr. Chet Davidson, and after Chet, we have Viola May Bledsoe.
Madam President, can you clarify if we're going to extend that or just do the thirty minutes?
Right, okay, so, um, I think thirty minutes is good. I'm looking around at my fellow board members. Kind of a consensus on the thirty minutes for?
Agreed.
Okay. That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Chet Davidson, locksmith, maintenance employee. I'm on the negotiating team for about the last eight years. Vice President of California School Employees Association, CSEA. We've been waiting out there a very long time. I've been out there for two and a half hours or so, and during this process of change, it would be nice to get public testimony done a little sooner, if possible. Uh, tonight, I came to talk to you about flexibility in the workplace. I'm more uncertain that you heard our, our concerned employees out there honking their horns and letting you know that they really care about this issue. This, this whole thing is temporary. We're going to get through this, but we just need some more flexibility. We're in the midst of negotiations, and we're talking about flexibility, but we need to look at it in a broader spectrum. More job classifications that qualify. I'm constantly being asked and emailed and called regarding people's situations, and I mean, I, I think as a group here, you got to think out of the box, how can we get these people to work from their home to, to benefit the district, to provide a service. I had a, a mother, a single, single mom, four kids, kindergarten through fourth grade, and she said, how am I supposed to do this when I have to be at work? And I, I didn't have an answer. I don't, I don't know what to tell her other than we're working on it. And, but she's not the only one. We got, we got story after story that people have to be to work, and they got little kids that have to be at home learning curriculum. I don't, you know, it's, it's it's above my pay grade, but, but I'm here speaking on behalf of these people. They need help, and, and they're desperate, and and I know there's, there's a lot of things going on, but the student, the students, their children need this. Their students of Long Beach unified. Are, are we, are we putting them to the side? Fortunately, the teachers that have kids here, they're, they have that option, and we, we need to have that option. We just need to, we, we need to find out what works, and we're going to get through this. We, we're, it's going to be a temporary thing. We're going to talk about this later down the road, but, but we need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, Viola May, and then Mariela.
Good evening, all. My name is Viola May Bledsoe, and I'm an instructional aide with the district, have been for almost thirty years. And I am going to try and get through this without totally breaking down. We, as classified employees, deserve the same parity and equality that the teachers get for not having to be in the classroom. Since the shutdown, I have not lived in Long Beach. I have lived in Mission Viejo with my seventy-five-year-old boyfriend who is fighting stage-four inoperable cancer. Yesterday, when we were at the oncologist, he is now down under a hundred and twenty pounds. He cannot walk without his walker or without getting up to get to the walker. He also has other issues going on besides the cancer. I have been taking him to the VA hospital two to three times a week for different procedures, including some surgeries. And to be told by this district and some administrators and managers and lawyer that it is what it is, and if we don't like it, we can go work somewhere else, is very hurtful and disrespectful to all of us. You heard over a hundred and fifty cars, and most of those cars had more than one peop, persons in them, honking. Some of them even had their children in it. We just want to be treated respectfully and in the same way the teachers have been to do Zoom. From March to June, we did Zoom. I was able to do Zoom at Rich's and be able to, when I wasn't on the Zoom, to take care of him. I would still like that opportunity. I know I'm not the only one that's having difficulty. There are many, many classified employees right now that are having to decide whether they want to go to work or whether they want to quit to be able to stay home to keep their family well. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Noel, after Mariela.
My name is Noel, and I'm a second grader. It is hard landing online. It is, I have the experience myself because I'm a second grade. My, some kids do not have the materials they need for school, and some families, they have trouble with their Wi-Fi. Having kids on a screen for five through seven hours is too much for preschool through college. It, it, it is loud to have. We have to find a way to shorten the day for online learning. We can think about having a outdoor learning. It is about the best choice for some schools to have. It can be fun to all kids, and thank you.
That was Noel. Do I get to start over, or that was Noel?
So now you're going to read for yourself?
No, this is for myself, Mariela. So I think we might have switched it and tell us.
Go ahead.
My name's Mariela Salgado. As my friend Jaleen would say, we're stuck in between a rock and a hard place. There are no easy answers, but I'd like to think there are a few things that we're all, we can all agree on. One is that every kid should have a device, a hotspot, and a noise cancellation headphones. As Long Beach Post posted today or yesterday, there's a gentleman, a single father, Jesse Alcala, with five kids in a two-bedroom home. I cannot imagine how that looks like at home. We can also agree that no kid should go hungry. I know that at the West Long Beach site that I serve, yesterday, there were a hundred and ten students that showed up for a school lunch. Today, there were a hundred and forty. You know, I really think that if we're talking about equity, we should extend those food stipends you guys did in the summer and allow them to just stay at home. You're talking about forty minutes for lunch. It took me twelve minutes to walk with my kids to that school site if I were to order pickup food, and twelve minutes to come back. It would take me seven minutes to drive there. That's not equity. These kids should not have to deal with having to pick up food in the middle of their already long day virtual learning. I think our classified student, classified workers, as you heard them earlier, should wor, should, should not worry about their jobs. They should be paid in the interim if we're providing those stipends. I really don't understand why we're making it so difficult. And lastly, I think we can all agree we can't solve this problem alone. This is a roundtable. We should be collaborating. As a Parks and Recs Commissioner, I'm disappointed to see that we have not followed the lead of Lakewood and Signal Hill to provide, provide a supervised program while parents work. They're providing daily activities include distant learning support, arts and craft, outdoor play. Just as I had spoken last time, there are learning pods happening already, substitute teachers being hired, TAs being hired. Everything you can think of to support our kids and those that are privileged can do so. I'm privileged to supervise my kids, even though I only worked for thirty minutes yesterday. That's all I was able to do yesterday. But I am privileged, and I acknowledge that, but I do think other parents need support, and I'm disappointed, and I encourage you all to please activate and support and have our, our park system help our students. This is the time. We have an opportunity to reimagine education, and as my daughter said, outdoor learning and incorporate outdoor learning. But instead, we are failing. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Leah?
Leah?
Yeah.
Yes, it's Jaleen Tatum, and I am back again, and I'm going to keep coming back. My name is Jaleen Tatum. I am a parent. The last few days have been the most stressful few days of the last year. When the shutdown happened, I was like, just go with the flow, which I have. And then as school got closer and closer and anxiety kicked up, three children, all logged in at the same time, doing schoolwork. I've heard and shared stories with other parents of our anxiety and frustration. I understand that there's no right answer at this time. Yet more than anything, we need to know that we're being heard and that we're being appreciated as parents in this district. So, observation and concern. October twenty eighteen, March twenty nineteen, February twenty twenty, El Cap Forum was hosted in the community, hosted at Cabrillo High School. December twenty nineteen, an education expert came and did a presentation for the community at Cabrillo High School. My board representative was not present. Area two. Area two happens to be the highest, has the highest concentration of at-need students in the district. On June first, LBUSD released a statement in response to the uprisings due to the murder of George Floyd. The statement was more of a PR piece praising the district versus raising the morale of the community. It was signed by my board representative. On July twenty-fourth, an op-ed piece hit the Long Beach Report in response to a board vote. It was penned by my board representative. This week, sitting in front of my computer, an ad pops up. Political ad. Guess who's in it? My board representative. I have never been so insulted that here I am, a parent in need of support, trying to figure it out, have not heard or seen my board representative, but you've got the nerve to be in an ad for a political campaign? Come on. Come on now. Give it to all of you who are in here doing this work. Appreciate you. We've never experienced this before. But don't forget, there's real people out there. My six-year-old sat in front of a computer for four hours yesterday. That's what's important, not the rest of this crap. I will be back.
And next, we have Lisa.
Lisa?
After Leah.
Hi, my name is Leah Blydestell, and I teach in the EduCare program. I am speaking in regards to the district's decision to exclude the various preschool programs, EduCare, Head Start, CDC, from the current MOU. First, we have been told that we remain open because Long Beach Unified is following state guidelines that require you to provide childcare to low-income essential workers. However, LA Unified's Head Start is not open for in-person services, and it makes me wonder why they are not required to follow the same state guidelines. Furthermore, EduCare is a school, not a childcare. We are only open from 7:45 to 2:45, which is not enough time for a person with a full-time job. We are not, nor have we ever been, intended to provide childcare for full-time workers. Second, one of our students already tested positive for COVID-19. The entire program had to be shut down for fourteen days while all students and staff went into self-quarantine. The program just reopened on August 26. To help prevent the spread of the virus, we have been told to socially distance our students. But trying to socially distance groups of one, two, and three-year-olds is only possible by physically holding them apart. We have separate toys, supplies, materials for each child. We pick things up. As soon as they are dropped, we are constantly disinfecting and cleaning everything throughout the day. Despite all of this, last month, in one of our classrooms, all but one of the five students, as well as both staff, contracted the common cold. Thank God, not COVID. But that was with all of the precautions. It did not stop it from spreading to almost everyone in the classroom. Another strategy that we are supposed to have is we remain with our students, isolated whenever possible from every other classroom. This doesn't happen. Since returning to the classroom in July, many teachers end up in each other's classrooms to cover breaks, absences, and so forth due to ratio requirements. Finally, this is an equity issue. We are teachers, most with bachelor's degrees and many of us with master's degrees, who are members of the same union as LBUSD teachers and pay the same union dues. If it is not safe for other teachers to be in their classrooms with their students, how can it possibly be safe for us to be in our classrooms with our students? Not only is this an issue in and of itself, but a full ninety-six percent of Head Start teachers and about eighty-eight percent of the families we serve identify as people of color. With black and brown people, or however they identify, being three times more likely to catch the coronavirus and twice as likely to die from it, this seems to be an extremely risky choice to make with our lives. Given all of these issues, especially in combination, how can the exclusion of these preschool programs possibly be justified? The safety of the students, teachers, and staff at these programs is no less important than the safety of other students, teachers, and staff. The recent closure and quarantine of the EduCare program proves that our program is not immune from this disease.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. After Lisa, we have Enrique Chavez.
Enrique?
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this meeting. My name is Lisa Kiwis. I'm a teacher at EduCare. I'm a teacher with a master's degree in special education, and my passion is to teach and inspire young minds. We've already had a case of COVID-19 at our center, and I had a fourteen-day quarantine. How are we not included in the MOU? All is all. We should be, have the same flexibility that teachers at home, that teachers have from K through 12, that teach from home or their school site. We were never even given a clear explanation on why we remain open with children. My understanding of all means all is all is all. It's not most, it's not some, it's all. We should be included and allowed to teach from home. I am scared of getting COVID-19. All I do is go to work and I come home. I haven't even been able to see my family, especially my grandchildren. It breaks my heart every day. This is why I'm asking to be allowed to do my job safely and continue to offer a program to children and their families from the safety of their homes. I'm also asking for mutual respect as a professional. I'm not a childcare worker. We have degrees and credentials. Thank you for allowing me to dress you. I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional, but it really hurts. You know, when I see these little children every day, trying to help them with a mask, trying to get them to social distance, trying to wash their hands, when I can do all of these things, teaching them, getting them prepared for kindergarten from home, where we're safe. I can do KWL charts, I can do my bubble maps, I can do all of that. And everyone can be safe. So please, please, I'm asking. And I'm coming here also to talk because I want to show my grandchildren that this is how you stand up for what you believe in. You come and you let people know your truths, and you need to be heard, and everybody matters. We matter too, as in the preschool world, EduCare. We have Head Start, CDC. We all matter, our lives matter. Please, include us. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Linda? Linda?
Linda?
Hi, my name is Enrique Chavez. I am a classified employee. So I want to start by saying, we are human beings. We're not supermen. We have families who are not immune to COVID-19. We are considered essential, yet we get no hazard pay. To give the superintendents their raises, the excuse was, we had to give them what was a going rate with other districts. Well, guess what? All the neighboring districts have shown that they care about their classified employees. They give their employees hazard pay. They give them additional protections. You only give us masks because the state mandated. As an alumni of your elementary, middle school, and high schools, I ask you to not forget that classified employees were also once LBUSD students. Do not forget, you were elected to serve your constituents of your district. And if your constituents don't have trust in you, they won't trust the district. Pull your negotiating team to the side and ask them, what the heck is going on? Ask them why they are nickel and diming us and putting their employee's safety at risk. Stop listening to the nonsense of your negotiating team attorney, who charges millions, and then we get nickels and dimes. We invite you to come to one of the negotiating meetings. Essential means essential. If your classified employees get sick, this will create a domino effect. All means all is the model that, but the true model should be shame on you. Next time you ask the taxpayers for money for a new bond, we will be sure to let them know that the money that is being used is being used to pay a high-level attorney to screw your classified employee's safety. Feel free to reach out to CSEA, and we will give you the other side of the story. P.S., Mr. William Fulton, thank you, but no thanks. We, the Jordan High alumni, decline your request to rename Jordan High School after you. A district you've never served in, go to Cabrillo, go to Poly, go to CAMHS, and rename one of those schools after you. Stay out of our district. Thank you.
Gilbert?
Hi, thank you for having me here. You're probably getting tired of hearing so many of us. But my name is Linda Hawes. I've been, our children have been in the district for ten years, going on ten years. And I just have two points to make. Number one, we know that good learning is making connections. It's not just sitting in front of a computer hour after hour. And right now, middle schools, high schools are doing minimum days. And I know for some of my kids, that's gonna work. Some, it's not. And when it gets to the full day, I'm concerned that learning is not going to be a connection. It's going to be just another problem to be solved. And the quote I wanted to share from Thomas Monson, "Do not let a problem to be solved become more important than a person to be loved." My husband and I see our main job as building good relationships with our children, regardless of what happens with school learning, because their learning will continue now and hopefully forever. So I would just say that more flexibility for us would be definitely the best thing. If we could work with teachers and principals, and I'm not sure how that looks. My brain is filled with a lot of different thoughts, but I think we could be more flexible. The second point is, some of our special needs students have to travel many, many miles outside of our district to go to a good, high-quality, non-public school facility. And that is really tough for some children who don't like to ride in a car, ride in a taxi day in and day out. They have to go and stop and pick up another. We live Lakewood, right by Long Beach. But then they have to go stop and get someone, maybe from Signal Hill or maybe up at North Long Beach and continue out to Manhattan Beach or Torrance. And that is just a long drive, over an hour, one way and back. I used to teach full-time in Idaho, and I understand it was the law that the children could not be in bus and transportation for more than one hour each way, just to be fair for the kids that lived further out in rural areas. And I think it behooves us to look to how facilities come here for the students in our district, as well as Bellflower, Cerritos, and all those districts around. Thank you so much.
Thank you. After Gilbert, we have Caesar. Caesar, after Gilbert.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come in and speak. My name is Gilbert Bonilla, Jr. I am the president of Long Beach, CSEA, Long Beach Chapter Two. And I'm gonna read something real quick from my labor relations representative, Brittany Jones. Hello, my name is Brittany Jones, and I am Labor Relations Representative for the California School Employees Association. I am proud to represent Long Beach Unified Classified Employees, and we will continuously advocate for their health, safety, and financial security of all of our members as labor partners. CSEA is asking the board to be considerate to the essential workers who have worked diligently throughout the COVID-19 outbreak. Classified employees deserve the same flexibility, consideration, and respect that the other units receive, and we stand in solidarity with all classifications that represent. Thank you. I'd like to cover some points. Classified are always, are and always have been essential. We deserve respect. We make the classroom safe for all the employees and support the educators and administrators in the district. We deserve flexibility in the face of COVID-19 so that we can support our families and keep our loved ones safe. Limiting exposure to COVID-19 is our priority, and we will continuously advocate for the safety of our employees, who must physically report to work. We're having a lot of issues still with PPE not being in places that COVID were, you know, was at and was closed down. We're having issues with, people are calling in about duties that they can't reform at home as they had during, you know, when we first started COVID. And they are wondering, and I'm getting tons of calls, not even just on social media, I'm getting tons of calls on our hotline regarding a lot of situations that are going on that you guys need to be mindful of. Because this is, to them, to all our people, we're just as important. Classified workers matter. We're, you know, the teachers, the students are important. The teachers are important. We're important. And we need to be, I think, thought in that. I mean, and if you are thinking of that, we're not feeling it. From what I'm getting, the feedback from them, it's, they're not feeling like they're valued here. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you weren't aware. Also, even bigger than that, I think that just, you know, more than Plexiglas or PPE, the fight is not just that, it's that we're people. We're people.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm back. My name is Caesar Armendaris, ZIP Code 90804. I'm actually here to speak about the equity situation. And I know, I know, part of what probably is going through some people's minds is, oh, my gosh, Caesar's back again to talk about equity, racial equity, racism, all of that. But to be quite honest, I don't feel like I have a choice. You know, I interact a great deal with black and brown parents here in Long Beach, and it's difficult to take in the information and not do something about it. And, you know, this is not just a Long Beach issue. It's a Western society issue, right? When we talk about racism and racial equity. I do want to thank you for giving us the space on the agenda to be vulnerable about these issues. So anytime you add something about equity on the agenda, it gives us that freedom to speak without feeling like we're out of place, which is something that a lot of black and brown people feel whenever they talk about racism. So thank you for that. You know, I think what we're dealing with as a society is the issue of the school-to-prison pipeline, and we're dealing with the school-to-grave pipeline as well. And so, you know, I don't think we have a choice but to continue to speak out and continue to work on it. You know, I think we're moving from a society that's purely colorblind or believes that they're colorblind to a society that is outright anti-racist. And so, as you deal with these equity issues, I hope that that becomes the framework, an anti-racist framework. Well, we talk about race, and it's uncomfortable sometimes to talk about race, but it's necessary. Because throughout our history, race has been part of every single policy, and it's come to the detriment of black and brown people. And so, if we want to deal with racism, we have to talk about race, and we have to make anti-racism normal. And so, that's the other reason why I'm here and why you'll probably keep hearing from me. It's not to create tensions, but to just make the suffering more visible and to normalize the conversations about race so that we can then steer the district into the direction of anti-racism. So the last thing I want to say about the equity piece is it's important that we understand that the communication needs to flow on each and every level. School board, principals, teachers, parents, community. Because if a teacher gets a call, or if a teacher talks about anti-racism, the principal gets a call from a parent, the superintendent has to back the principal, the principal has to back the teacher, and the school board has to back the superintendent. So we all have to be anti-racist together. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the full thirty minutes, Madam President, so we are done.
That is the full 30 minutes, Madam President, so we are done. So we have received online public comment that will become a matter of public record and be distributed to the board members. So even if your comments weren't read here tonight, we will be reading them as board members and they will become available to the public. Next on the agenda, we have the staff report. So a school opening update.
Madam President, I'm going to suggest that we take a five, five or seven-minute break and then reconvene with the, the presentation that's scheduled on launching virtual learning and teaching.
Okay, so let's do that and reconvene in five minutes? Maybe seven?
And all the browser updates and all the things that go along with using that tech. So just to let you know, our district website, if you poke around on the website, you'll find all kinds of resources for parents to help them with the technology. So that's kind of a first stop for parents. But recognizing that to access the technology on a computer, you have to be able to have the computer working. So with that in mind, our school sites welcomed parents and students who came by yesterday and today as well and brought their Chromebook and said, can you help me because it's not working? And so our classified staff members and our administrators were out in the front of the schools, helping kids one by one get connected. So some of this work is just a one-to-one sort of situation. Teachers have been supporting their students and their families on the phone. And we've got the tech support hotline that's been published as well. So there's an actual hotline that parents can call in. It's hard sometimes to get tech help over the phone. That's why the in-person help has been really working well. But anyway, with that being said, just at about 4:42 this afternoon, we pushed out some information to parents and letting them know how they can pair to their student's account in Canvas. So as of right now, I don't have the data because we've been here in the meeting, but I would imagine that several of our parents are now beginning to connect to their students' accounts, which means that they'll be able to start seeing and receiving information. So it's a very exciting next step. So I want to say thank you to our Office of Equity, Access, and College and Career Readiness, Research Office in Tisby, who've been providing a lot of that technical support. And just to let you know, this is from the end of day yesterday. So don't have the data for today. But as of yesterday, we had 61,000 students successfully logged into Canvas. So that's our numbers from yesterday. Talking about attendance. So as you know, we are taking attendance now daily. And Chris Brown from the Research Office let us know that in our elementary schools, so TK through grade five, we had 90% of students marked present for live instruction. And at the secondary level, that was 81%. So what that means is yesterday, 90% of elementary and 81% of secondary students participated in a live Zoom with their teacher. So the teacher sees them in Zoom and marks them as present for the day. What we want you to know as well, though, is that if a student can't participate in a Zoom for some reason, it doesn't mean they're not going to get credit for being in class. So we have an alternate system that will allow us to take attendance for asynchronous participation. So teachers will have a separate system in which they will document whether or not a student was able to submit work and participate, not necessarily on Zoom, maybe there's something going on that day. Could be a number of reasons why they might not choose to participate, but they can still participate in learning and have that be credited toward attendance. So we're working out those systems, but that is something that we're looking forward to. We're looking forward to also having more data for you, but this is what we've got right now as of this moment. So we should hear more in the future about how many students were able to connect today. So the last time we were together, Dr. Simon gave you some information on our outreach efforts for families, knowing that we haven't connected with every single family yet. So this is just a reminder that we've been working on connecting with these families through the summer, those who we didn't hear from when we asked them to tell us their choices for learning. And so that outreach is being continued. So our school sites are using the autodiler daily, and teachers and office staff are making those phone calls home. And part of the conversations that they're having are around, do families have any basic needs, some resource needs? And then also, how about internet or technology needs? So again, those are the kinds of conversations. Those efforts will be or are being supplemented and supported by district-supported outreach. So we've got our Family Resource Centers, our all-in staff members, our Office of School Support Services, Foster Youth, Social Worker, and then community agencies. And that work includes making those home visits. So as I mentioned before, this is a one, kind of one-family, one-student-at-a-time process that we're working ourselves through. So in preparation for all of this online learning and teaching, you recall that last week, we hosted a teacher training week. So essentially, what you're seeing on the slide there represents the 40 hours of teacher training that teachers could be paid for if they chose to attend training last week. So everything that you see in the blue boxes, that represents the Canvas and Zoom training, totaled about 12 hours. So those blue boxes there representing across the re- show you how teachers got their Canvas training. The green boxes were curriculum training. And if you recall, I shared with you those Smart Start units, Unit Zero, where teachers are getting all kinds of resources built by the OCIPD staff. That's what happened in those green boxes. Also, new textbook and training on those new textbooks, that kind of training happened there. In the lavender and yellow, what you see, those were teachers' choice. So teachers got to choose the kinds of sessions that they wanted to attend. So things like social-emotional learning or equity, any of the kinds of things, they could go to more Canvas training if that's something that they were interested in. And then finally, the white boxes represent site-led training and collaboration time. So each of our principals was responsible for coming up with training opportunities and collaboration opportunities for their teachers to come together, plan, and prepare for the start of school this week. So a lot of resources put into that. And just, I don't want to belabor what Dr. Baker said earlier, but I do want to mention a couple of names to you. I would like to publicly thank Natortual. He really did an amazing job of coordinating all of that training. It would not have been possible without his countless hours of work. Amy Pendre, you've heard me mention her name before, coordinated all the Canvas training and arranged for all those 150 Canvas trainers to get their training the week before they did their training last week. And Dr. Venita Chandrasekhar, who works in the Research Office, also really contributed to all of the tech training that we did. There were 27 members of the OCIPD staff who wrote curriculum. So this took place during the summer. And as Dr. Baker mentioned, these people were all on summer break. But this is what they did for their summer break to get us ready. And then they served, those 27 served as trainers along with another 46 members. So just an incredible lift by a lot of really dedicated people. So I know you like data, so here's a little fun data chart for you. This simply just shows you that in the one week in August that we did this training, we trained 3,672 certificated staff members. And the red line represents the registrations through MyPD, which is the system we use to register you for training. The red line is what we did last year. And the blue line shows you what we just did. So there's just really no comparison to the kind of work we usually do this time of the year and what we ended up doing. So 120 sessions altogether. This slide is really just for fun. If you, I don't know if any of you know Kim Duñez, but she served as one of our many Canvas trainers. And so in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see the three trainers together in a classroom together. So many of our trainers, they decided to do their training physically together, knowing that it's easier to interact with people when you're in the room face-to-face. So they did their training from a classroom. And then on the right-hand side is what the training looked like for our teachers and our trainers. So again, a very different kind of training experience than what our trainers and our teachers are generally used to. But what I can tell you is that we got some good feedback. There was the site collaboration and planning, and this is just another example of a tweet that went out from a, this time from a teacher at Dooley. But a lot of tweets around gratitude for the time with their colleagues and for how much the teachers supported each other through this whole process. It's just been really amazing. As far as the evaluation, we asked at the end of the Canvas training, how satisfied are you with the training you received? And we got 1,949 responses. Now, it's 76% said they were very or mostly satisfied with the training. We usually like numbers higher than that, but I want to remind you that the trainers were trained in this the week before. So we're really happy with those numbers because these people worked really, really hard. We know we still have a lot more to do. We are definitely not finished, but we are off to a start. And then finally, I wanted to end with the slides and transition to questions with this. Again, a couple of more tweets. The words of the week seem to be, both in the tweets and in those evaluations that the teachers gave us, were grace and gratitude. So teachers really talked about offering one another, really no matter what our roles are in the system, a lot of grace and understanding that we're all learning right now. And then gratitude for all the support that they provided and gave to one another. So with that, I'm going to stop. And I'm going to ask, if you have questions, there's a lot of people in the room who've contributed to the work, who would be happy to answer the questions.
I have a quick question about troubleshooting. If there is a student or parent that's having trouble with Canvas, what should they do first?
So if they have access to a computer, we would want them to go first to the website to see what resources are there. But really, it's going to depend on what kind of problem are they having. So right now, it would mostly be if it's a login problem. Most of the problems really weren't with Canvas. Most of the problems had to do with a browser not working or students not knowing where to connect. So we haven't had very many Canvas-specific questions. And I'm going to knock on wood when I say that.
Okay. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I think I'm going to ask your question slightly different, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So I'm a Spanish-speaking parent. Dr. Kell, I just got this text message at 4:37, I think I got the text message, that I can now associate my student with Canvas. What do I do?
So you're going to click on the links, and everything that's provided has been provided in Spanish as well. So you're going to look for where it says Spanish in the link.
So I did that.
Did you find it?
I did. And it took me to instruction.com. And it says about this guide, so I'm at the guide page.
And it's in English?
Well, there's an option there to go to Kumai or Spanish, but it came up in English.
Yeah, I've been sitting here when that email went out, so I haven't seen it myself.
But it'll get fixed.
Absolutely.
It'll get fixed.
Right.
Walk me through, okay, there's a guide here now, what do I do?
Well, I can't see what you're seeing.
It says Canvas Parent Guide. And it says, this guide provides LBUSD parents with information, but there isn't anything there right now. I'm looking on my smartphone. And I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot. I just know that parents, when they got this text today, so I think there's an opportunity here to just share with parents. Where do I go?
So if that's the case, the best place to go right now is the school because the school can answer most questions. The very technical questions where there's an actual technical problem, the schools know who to refer parents to. We do have a technical hotline if it's a technical issue. It's sometimes hard to tell the difference. Your issue sounds more like an information issue. So our school sites should be able to help direct them to the proper place in the website. But we will definitely check to see where everything is and do all the links work. So you're seeing it? Okay, so Dr. Camarino is seeing it in Spanish and Kumai.
Do you get the coming soon at the very bottom, Jay?
No, it says the actual guide in Spanish. And it was that I can click on it. It's by the Kumai that I can click on.
I'll show you afterwards, but I might, it says coming soon at the bottom.
Is yours in the research view?
It's in, I just hit the link. I hit the text link that I got. And I know it'll be figured out, but again, I think what I want to communicate to parents is, first line of defense right now is to go to the, contact the school site for some help?
Sure. If you're running into problems, our schools are ready to help. And they know who to send you to if they're not able to answer your question.
Perfect.
Okay, there is a button on, it says Canvas on the front page that folks can click on when they get to the LBschools.net that says Canvas, and that is in multiple languages. So right on that home screen, it's the Canvas icon and it says Parent Support. That takes you to all parent resources that are in specific languages. So if you're looking at the website, it's got a guide for logging on, finding Zoom, parent access, all in one place in multiple languages.
Awesome. I guess my only question, Dr. Kell, is, actually, before I say that, thank you to all of the staff that got this going, right? That got us going. And to all the teachers, right, that are doing the training, the training trainers. I just, my utmost appreciation to all the work that went in to get us going today. And there's going to be kinks. So all of my questions are in the spirit of, it will get fixed, there will be kinks. On the data that you showed, 90% and the 81% out of what is the 81% or 90%?
Of the students enrolled.
Yeah, do we know what that number is?
Our exact number, where did we leave off?
Roughly.
Seventy, seventy-one.
Roughly, okay, okay.
Okay, do we have any further questions about Canvas or for Dr. Kell?
Yes.
Thank you to everyone. I think we all knew that yesterday would have some hiccups, and we know some families had harder experiences than others. But it certainly wasn't because of lack of care or concern by the thousands of folks who worked hard to connect students yesterday. Just again, on that hotline, I know we have a phone number where folks can either leave messages and get a call back. There was a question around getting direct support for those with hotspots from Verizon and really asking them to check in with our tech people, is that just so we could keep track of who was getting support? I know, because I think Verizon was steering them back to them, and I'm just curious why.
Interface with Kajit, which is the hotspot provider that we currently contract with.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Nutrition Services and Mark Chávez.
So I'm happy to introduce Mark Chávez, our director of-
Nutrition Services, who really represents a department that has really moved mountains to ensure that our students' most basic needs are met during this pandemic. So I'm really happy to bring him up to provide an update on Nutrition Services.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Baker, Board President Craig Gait, members of the board, community members watching at home. My name is Mark Chávez, Director of Nutrition Services for the Long Beach Unified School District. And it is my pleasure that I share with you a brief overview of Nutrition Services and all of the great work that has been happening since the pandemic started. And so since schools closed in March through now August or end of August, we have been able to pull together to provide our city, our youth, meal service access. So let's show, oh, let me see. There you go. And we have our tonight's agenda, a real brief overview to talk about four of the major takeaways for you, along with any questions towards the end. But I'd also like to start off by saying Happy New Year to all of our students, teachers, administrators, parents, and partners in the community. It is a very exciting time to come back to a new school year and continue the great work of feeding our children, our youth, our future. And so with that, Nutrition Services has been very busy since the pandemic took place. So we have been serving now several meals, over 1 million to several of our stakeholder groups. Not only have we been serving school breakfast, school lunch, and after-school supper, but we've also stepped up big time to help our city partners by feeding our emergency operations center first responders. The city asked from one day to the next to help them support feeding the homeless shelters at three locations, and we did that. And so adult feeding pushed us over that 1 million by serving those 28,000 adults in our city. So not only do we take care of our youth, but we take care of the entire community. And so we do that greatly with the 450 strong employees that we have. So thank you to our classified Nutrition Services professionals. And we do that across the 84 schools that we have comprised, on average, our annual operating budget is about $36 million. And so very complex and large meal program to operate, and we do that here in Long Beach. And so we also have some transition into the new year. And so we have our plans to operate under the Summer Food Service Program, which was a federal USDA program that just announced on the 31st of August, the extension of this waiver that allows school districts across the country to serve access free meals at breakfast and lunch, including supper meals to the sites that are eligible based on the free and reduced percentage data. And so we will be looking to do that same supper meal program across 48 schools that are area-eligible in our district. But we are serving breakfast and lunch to not only our K-12 students, but also to youth that are younger siblings. So anyone from the ages of 1 through 18 years of age will be eligible to receive meals. And so all families have to do is visit one of our sites that we have. We have 79 operating open sites so far. We do have five schools that will not be able to open due to ongoing construction still at those sites. CAMHS is one of those, Longfellow, Coverley, Stevenson, as well as Fremont. And so those schools, upon opening or concluding the construction, we will open those as well. But we also have some details here to share with our families watching at home where we can talk about the program. So 79 serving sites. We do have the 48 eligible supper feeding sites that we will open up. But some important key updates for our parents. Even though we are serving meals for free, it is important that they complete the meal application for this school year, 2021. Because the extension of the waiver only is available through December 31st of this year or so as long federal funding is available, which could be at any time between now and December. So if families would like to receive meal benefits, fill in out the application by visiting our website at Nutrition Services Branch. You can visit the LBUSD website, use the A-through-Z index, and access Nutrition Services website by hitting the N in that index. Also, we will be having more information as we announce press releases on our website. But also, follow us on our Instagram account, @LBUSDnutrition. It is important that we also share with our families and parents that the importance of that meal application drives not only school meal program funding, but also district-level funding for the general fund. So this goes to all of those instructional programs, interventions, and activities that students can partake in. So to all the parents watching, I encourage you to seek out that application, fill it out online. It's very easy, fast, and accessible for you. Lastly, I'd like to share with the families and of course, the board, some of the protocols and steps that we take to make sure that our students, staff, and visitors that we serve on the daily are safe, considering the pandemic. And some of the protocols that we have initiated by making sure that our staff are equipped with the proper personal protective equipment, such as sanitizer, face covering, shields, as we move forward into serving the public and maybe in the future, as we start reopening schools. We do all of this in partnership with the guidance available from the local health department, county, state, and CDC appropriate guidelines. And so we do this also under some principles of HASSAP. That's an abbreviation for hazardous analysis critical control points. Those are just simple principles in food handling, cleaning, sanitizing, using your equipment in our workspaces. And so all of our staff and management team has worked to develop appropriate training programs throughout the pandemic. And we continue to do so as new information is provided and made available to school districts or directors like myself. So we will continue to monitor any guidance that is necessary to abide by and make sure that our staff and students are safe at all times. And so we do know that we have health screenings since we started in the early stages of the pandemic in our production center, where meals are centrally produced and distributed to our schools. So we will continue to do those as we do that already. And so to all of our families, our staff, we will continue to be diligent in our safety protocols for our students and youth in the community. And so with that, that concludes my brief overview of the meal program for you. I will take questions at this point.
Yes, Dr. Williams.
Yes, first and foremost, thank you for your excellent report and for the good work of you and your staff in making sure that our children in the city get fed. I mean, in a district that is 70% poverty by federal guidelines, and in my district, it's close to 80 and 90%. So I know that the work that you're doing is critical for the families in my district. Are parents able to pick up these food for their children? Or is it just, are you handing them out just to children?
Yes, so part of these waivers that the federal government has provided to us allows parent pickup waivers. So parents, I'm sorry, students do not have to be present. However, it is a requirement that they show some sort of documentation or proof that the meals that they request without children present is tied to some youth. So student school ID, class schedule, if it's a secondary student. If they completed the meal application for the year, we issue a benefit, a meals benefit letter to them, so they can bring that. Anything that identifies the student, if it's an enrolled student, but if it's a younger sibling in the household, they can just bring them with them or just some sort of documentation to tie them to the family.
So I can't come by and pick up? I can't do that.
Do you have a student in the district?
I got it.
Member cur.
Right, you got to be one to 18, Felton, sorry.
Yes.
Or they might sell you one.
That disqualifies a man.
Just bury it.
I'll see if I can pull it off.
Okay.
Member cur.
Yes, Mark, thank you so much for your presentation. I know when I requested this, it was because we were in very different circumstances until that waiver came through on Monday. So I want to thank you for the advocacy that I know you were doing behind the scenes.
Yes.
I know our partners at CSBA and Council of Great City Schools and across this country were really horrified, actually, that the federal government was considering withholding meals from families during a pandemic and an epidemic crisis. So I know that you were probably furiously making phone calls to advocate for, I would assume, we just shamed them into changing the policy at the last minute because children need to eat to learn. So thank you for that. In terms of the meal application, just a couple of suggestions potentially. We have a new learning management platform, and my understanding, it has buttons on it. Is there a way to add a button to the Nutrition Services application for all of the school sites? And maybe can get assigned as a, hey, turn this in and get a sticker kind of thing? But to utilize that platform to get families to sign up? Maybe we could also, I know we've been doing a ton of work around the census as kids are picking up their supplies, but partnering with our city partners and asking them to, in their city newsletters, to potentially add the link for families to qualify for meals. We know lots of families, their economic situations have changed, and that could impact a family that has never chosen to fill out a meal application, that they might have benefits that they weren't aware of due to the crisis. So if we could make that accessible and work with our partners potentially to put that in as many places as possible. But again, thank you for all of the meals. I was chatting with Nutrition Services folks at Jordan this afternoon, and they were so happy to be welcoming folks back. We know that that's been critical to their work. And we're grateful for everyone who's been working hard to make sure kids can continue to eat and families can continue to eat. So thanks for coming out tonight.
Of course, no problem. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, Mark, thank you. Is there any flexibility? Can we provide any flexibility in terms of the actual time to pick up the grab and go? Because in the spring, there obviously was less structure around the instruction. So folks had a little bit more flexibility to come and go. I have been contacted by parents, we heard in public comment tonight, that, you know, it may be a challenge to get to school, grab your lunch, and come back. So any thoughts on any way we can be flexible considering that students have more of a structured schedule, especially the smaller ones that can't be left at home for potentially a parent to go pick up their lunch, so they're going to have to bring them with them? So any thoughts, or is that something that we can think about, Mark?
Yes, I appreciate the question, Dr. Benitez. And so I would share with the families at home that- And so I would share with the families at home that we staggered the schedules from different school types, so between elementary, middle school combo, and high schools, so that the local, regional area, wherever the family may be living, there's access by having seventy-nine schools. So I believe there may be a misperception that they only can go to their local school, but they cannot just do that. They can go to any school that we have open at the appropriate service time. So if there's a neighbor, a friend, someone that can pick up meals, again, using and leveraging that adult pickup waiver, as long as they have, as an adult, the appropriate documentation or IDs of those students, we will provide. And so, like in the spring, some daycare providers did bring all of that documentation and pick up meals for large amounts of youth. And so I encourage any adult watching to do the same. We are going to work with our level offices and school principals to make sure that if there's a need for some adjustments locally, we look at that and we review that. And so we have an ongoing discussion. I think in the spring, we've shown that we've been flexible with our community, making sure that we pivot where we need to, to make access available for our youth and families, of course. So we will continue to always do that as we move forward. So we appreciate any input or feedback from parents, students, or administrators as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Oh, I just want to close with a couple things. First of all, thank you, Mr. Chavez, for the work of you and your team. We recently had an opportunity to visit the Nutrition Services Branch. There's a great video on our district YouTube channel if you want a behind-the-scenes tour of what goes on at Nutrition Services, but great, great teamwork. It's also an opportunity for you as board members to see what happens behind the scenes. And I love that Mr. Chavez reminded us that LBUSD Nutrition Services Branch is the largest restaurant chain in Long Beach. Let that sink in. It is a huge effort. Secondly, thank you, Board Member Cur, for reminding the community that submitting a meal application, as Mr. Chavez explained, is very important to the finances of our district. It only takes a few minutes. Great suggestion. We'll look into putting it on canvas, but we need families to hear that message just as they have heard about the census. It matters. It matters for the future of supplemental instruction and all the different things that we want to be able to offer our families, especially families who are struggling most.
Yes.
Dr. Williams.
Jill, I don't know if you recall, John, you may recall this, but back in the early days when we were on the board, we held meetings over at Food Services. I don't think they fed us, but we did have a meeting.
We did.
Yeah. Good chance to see what was going on, you know?
Ms. Cur.
Like visiting school sites, maybe we could have a meeting in Food Services.
Well, Dr. Baker, we do open the doors to the Nutrition Center to host any meetings that may be necessary on your agenda. That way you can see us in action and also see the good work that our classified staff are performing on the day.
At the last meeting, Dr. Williams, I heard Mark say he could make some paella if we ever. Let's go with that.
Ms. Cur.
And I did see Mark sneak in during our workshop and left a basket of Nutrition Services goodies back there. But I did have two questions that I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, because I made notes and still forgot them. Two things, we have increasing number of students and families who are vegetarian and vegan, and I know that you guys have been doing a lot of recipe development and hopeful that as we continue into the year that we can make available some more vegetarian options for families.
Sure.
So that they can utilize the meal service, especially those who are in need of meal service. That was one thing. So if you could speak to that. And then the second thing was, in terms of our allergy-sensitive students, I know that we do have a central kitchen location, which can make some of that work difficult. So if you could just speak to those two items quickly, I would appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Cur. So in terms of the vegetarian options or the menu options in general, one of the things that the meal program is trying to do is mitigate the expenditures that we're spending so that we stay self-sufficient as much as possible in the meal program. And we needed to use up inventory that was in-house already before it expires. And so where we have been challenged in distributing the volume of food that we had on hand, because our participation has significantly declined since we closed schools, and of course, because of COVID. However, once we have a good place to pivot, one more time on the menu, we do look forward to making those offerings available so that way students or youth that want a vegetarian option or an alternative to what we serve right now, that would be available for those youth members. In terms of your second point, the special meals or special diets, that is a little bit more tricky and a little bit more difficult to tackle, simply because in a normal setting where schools are open and students are at a particular site, we know where they're at and what diet they require. Having a open, free service to any school location, someone who may be a special diet need may go to one school and then another on a different day. And so to follow the student or the youth member of the community is difficult. And so we would have to develop a check-in program with our parents, so that way we have specific locations where they will commit to going, where we can send the food there specifically for them. And so it is something that we have been facing as a challenge since the pandemic occurred, but that's not only Long Beach, that is all nutrition programs across the country. And part of that is also a waiver from the federal government where they said, we recognize the challenge. If you can, great, pursue the opportunity to serve, but if you cannot, because of logistics or just the safety and potential liability to the district, we will waive this requirement to make it mandatory to serve. So it's gonna be some work for my team and I to tackle, but we will definitely take note to address this need.
Thank you. I even just appreciate the information, the consideration. The background's helpful. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cur.
Well, I want to thank you for the presentation. I also want to mention that I did have the opportunity to tour the facilities, the Nutrition Services facilities. For one thing, it was just strikingly clean. It was, everything was just, you know, wonderfully clean. It was bright and shiny, all the equipment and everything. And then another thing that was noteworthy to me was being in the warehouse. Because in the previous year, I served on the business committee, and we always went over the expenditures, for example, and the amount of money we spend on food is incredible. But to see a lot of that food in cans and that type of thing on shelves in a warehouse situation, it reminded me of the last scene in Indiana Jones where they put the ark away in the, you know, in a wooden box, and there's all these wooden boxes, and it's that big. It just had that feeling of being that big. And I don't know how you keep track of all the inventory, but I'm glad you do. So thank you for hosting us. Thank you for allowing us to come and tour the facilities, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, where are we? Business items. Okay, personnel, Dr. Williams.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have the personnel report prepared by Mr. David Zay, the Assistant Chief Lieutenant of HR, approved by Dr. Jill Baker, Superintendent. I will read the classified portion of the report first. There were three appointments, twenty-eight leaves of absence, one termination of service, seven resignations, two retirements, and one amendment. On the certificated portion, there were fifty-one appointments, fifty-two in-service changes, fifteen leaves of absence, one resignation, seven retirements, and move approval.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Instruction?
Move approval.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Yes, I know, again, it's been a long meeting, but I would ask Dr. Cale if she could come up really quickly and speak about the approval of the new middle school course, Ethnic Studies, and the peer assistance training, just to give us some background. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll start with the new middle school Ethnic Studies course. So this new course is going to be initiated at the school site or at the district level to meet needs of students. And so this course was initiated by Cubberly, who asked us to build this course. So the program administrator in OCIPD, along with the History Social Science Curriculum Leader, got together and built the course. So the course aligns with the High School Ethnic and Identity Studies course that's offered at many of our high schools. So this one is, though, in fact, for our seventh and eighth graders. So Ethnic Studies is an interdisciplinary field of study that encompasses many subject areas, including history, literature, economics, sociology, anthropology, and political science. So in particular, in this course, the students will understand the politics of privilege and the historical reasons for structural racism, classism, and discrimination. So Ethnic Studies seeks to empower all students to engage socially and politically and to think critically about the world around them. So the course highlights the experience of people that have been traditionally marginalized in order for students to critique dominant narratives, construct counter-narratives, and develop a more complex understanding of the human experience. So through these studies, the students should develop respect for cultural diversity and see the advantages of inclusion. So this is, again, going to be a middle school elective course, and it really does align with our larger equity framework and the work that we've been talking about moving toward when we think about Ethnic Studies across the district. So it's one small step in moving toward that vision.
And just because Cubberly was the initiator of this and is wanting to use this now, there's the potential for other middle schools, and Cubberly's a K-8, so it's a smaller middle school, to incorporate this as an elective in the future?
Absolutely. So any school that would want to be able to offer this course can approve this, can use this course once approved.
Chris, I have a.
Actually, we, I think Dr. Benitez was next.
Love it. You beat me to it, Board Member Cur. Let's do it at Franklin, Chris. Let's get that Ethnic Studies course at Franklin. Thank you, Kristi. I had the same appreciation of comment. Since you're up, though, I do want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't share that Chris Itzen shared with me that if I, if we refresh our browsers, the Canvas link does work. So to everyone listening, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Dr. Cur, but it works. You just sometimes have to go back and forth with the browser. That's probably because a ton of people are using it right now, too. But yes, the link works.
Okay.
Okay, good. Good to note. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Yes, Kristi, I did a survey a few years ago of all the schools in Council of Great City Schools. We did a survey on Ethnic Studies. And one of the questions on, it was a number of questions, but one question was, who was teaching the course? And in most cases, it was a variety of people, social studies teachers, and it, just a hodgepodge of folks, that's the wrong term to use, but a diverse mixture of folks who were teaching Ethnic Studies. And in a lot of the cases, in the data that came back, there were no real outcomes to what was happening with the course. One of the other questions I asked was, well, what are you doing with the data? And only two of the, two of the school districts out of the seventy-four that we surveyed were doing anything with the Ethnic Studies data. Asking, what type of courses were you teaching in Ethnic Studies? And it varied throughout in terms of some were teaching this course, some were teaching that course. And the training that was required to teach the course, so again, it was, it was, you know, it was just a kind of a free-for-all. Now, right now, we have high school teacher, I'm sorry, college teachers who are teaching Ethnic Studies for our district. That is a whole different ballgame in terms of what they bring to this process. I'd like to know who, at what level, who are going to be teaching here in the district in terms of our people? And if it's our teachers, I would hope that we can align those folks with our folks at Cal State Long Beach for training to make sure we get that consistency in terms of what we're getting from the faculty at Cal State Long Beach, because those kids are really getting something out of that course that we're teaching because of the faculty at Cal State Long Beach.
And I don't know that we've done any evaluation of our current high school courses, so that's maybe another piece of information we'd want to find out. I know we've put a lot of time and energy into doing an evaluation study with the students enrolled in the Cal State Long Beach course, but I haven't seen anything comparable for our courses, so that's probably something else we could be looking into as well.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
To add on to what you said, Dr. Williams, it seems to me it calls for professional development, which we're so good at, Kristi, you know, to make sure those teachers get that wherewithal before they start trying to teach that class.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Finance Report A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Finance Report B.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? With one abstention, so it passes four-one. Business Department, I'm sorry? Oh, four-zero. Yeah, thank you. Business Department Report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Purchasing and Contracts Reports.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes five-zero. Superintendent Items? We have none. Okay. We've already taken care of number twenty-four. New Business Equity Policy Development Update. Dr. Brown?
I will speak up here so I can see you better. I mean, keeping with our commitment to provide an update on our equity work, I have some thoughts to share with you this evening. This is for information only, and this is specific to the idea of how we hope to engage students in this process. So it seems really important to highlight this concept that equity means everything. And we can hear, even in our discussion this evening, how many prongs we're reaching to in terms of the equity lens that we're applying. We just heard from Mark Chavez, I think he left already, but I want to recognize him as an equity warrior. We're leading work. So, um, sorry. Let's get it quiet off. I keep off. Well, I'm gonna say again about Mark Chavez for being an equity warrior and recognizing that our reach into the community needs to be further and deeper than it is when we plan things in an easy way. Our effort right now is to plan things in a very intentional way, which is harder, but is rewarding and is our commitment to this really wonderful community. So as we think about some of the ways that we're hearing about equity right now, we're talking about equity in the way that we're viewing student data, in the way that we're seeking input on curriculum selections, emotional and well-being supports, how we're staffing, how we're planning for recruitment. These are some of the ways you've already heard, that we're reaching towards more equity in the processes and the procedures that we use, how we're engaging voices from the field, and really having long conversations about items like public comments so we can make sure that we are not only giving access, but really engaging. The way that we're looking at student achievement. the way that we're looking at student achievement data. And the list goes on and on and on. So as we move forward, this idea that equity means everything is what we want to carry us forward. All Means All is going nowhere. But sometimes, and recently, the way we're hearing reference to All Means All sounds as if everyone should be receiving the same thing. And that was never the intention, and that's certainly not the intention of our equity work. We don't want everyone to receive the same thing. We want to reach into places that allow us to give more of what everyone is needing. So with that as the platform, and you saw this graphic once before, I will bring it around many times. Because this is the process that we will use to really ensure that we are, from the very ground level, the ground floor, including student and community input in the decisions that we make around the development of both an equity leadership team but also an equity policy that will be coming. And you may want to say, when is that coming? There's a process in getting to that part. And so we can't have engagement without engagement. So this is a process around how we're engaging the students and the community, but also how we're accessing the district committees that we already have in place in the build-out towards this equity leadership team. So this graphic will become something that you attach to these updates because we want it to be a guide for the work that we're moving forward. In the spirit of student engagement, this is an example of a matrix that we're working towards. And this is really just as an update tonight for information only to give you a couple of snapshots of what's coming. We're working on a matrix that will look like this, that will reference the ways that we are engaging in our excellence and equity work around students, the type of organization or group that we're pulling together, the work that they will be doing, who will be responsible for that work, how we will link to other meeting calendars. And the idea is to really, both for yourselves, but also for our whole community, in the spirit of student engagement around equity. If I wanted to know what kind of efforts are being made, this is meant to be a repository of efforts that are being made, the way that we're working towards these efforts, and what the next steps will be. So this is a snapshot of something that is to come. These things are in process now, and more to come as we move forward. This will also be a process that we use to highlight the same type of work we're doing around community engagement with respect to equity from our district committees, et cetera. So the, the goal here is to organize the many efforts into one place so that we can all access those, and we have an ongoing hub of where the work is happening and how it can be efficiently laid out. So in terms of a timeline on student engagement, a couple of, of high-level activities that are beginning. First, we're going to engage in the idea of a student thought exchange to gather a wide range of input from students. I've been getting some really wonderful emails from students who are asking to be engaged. And we want to engage that group of students. We also want to engage students who are not asking to be engaged. We, we want to invite them to the table, to the conversation, and learn from the experiences. And the wonderful thing about youth is when you ask them, they will tell you, and most often, they will tell you the truth. So we look forward to hearing more, and by the beginning of October, we'll be moving forward with that work. Next, we'll be a selection of student representatives, and we'll be working with the school sites as well as some of our community partners and groups that are active in youth engagement to have an ongoing group of students that we're working with to engage in the equity policy that we hope to design, but also to give us that good on-the-ground information about their lived experiences and what we need to be guiding ourselves towards. And my hope is that we will be engaging them in the process that we're using because there's no one better to tell how a young person could be engaged than to ask a young person, what would bring you into this conversation in a helpful way. And then lastly, we'd like to move forward with this idea of having student-led town hall meetings. And this is something that we've learned about in partnership with some of our work from the Wallace Grant and some of the collaborative districts that have been a part of that work, where they have, with students, led the concept of a student town hall meeting, where there's a gathering of, and this would be done virtually in our current environment, but a gathering of young voices in kind of a town hall format to really engage around what do we need to be hearing from young people? What are we missing? What do we need to plan more for? And how can we continue to actively engage them in, in what I hope, and I believe you hope, will be an ongoing conversation, not one conversation? So those are some of the higher-level next steps that we'll be taking. In terms of a next update, you can expect a similar format around the concept of community engagement. This is focused on students, as well as a timeline for those next steps. And then next, really wanting to engage with you in the idea of the development of an equity leadership team and how that process will go moving forward. Questions, thoughts, comments?
Great work. Thank you. I think for me, I appreciate the fact that it's an ongoing process, that it's not just one of these like one-and-done, you know, oh, we addressed it and we're over it. I love that we're working on it, that it's something that we will continue to do. And I love the fact that we are engaging students in such a meaningful way, that we're going to be inviting certain students who maybe are not reaching out to us, that we're including students that are reaching out to us. Those are the things that stand out to me.
Dudo.
Dudo, I like that. Dr. Benitez?
Dr. Brenner, I may have missed this in the LCP. Is this explicitly included in aspects of the LCP? I'm wondering if we can align this work, since, you know, we have a next iteration here, because I think it's a natural fit, particularly with vulnerable and high-needs students that are included in the LCP, right?
I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that up. I think we've included some of the concepts, but to your point, I think we can be more specific in the language, specifically around the student engagement. So thank you for that.
Great, great work.
Good. Okay. Any, any further discussion or? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, report of board members. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was very, very pleased to hear about the ethnic studies piece moving into our middle school population, given what we've been able to discern from the program at the high school level and the impact it has made at that level. So to have a progression from the middle school, moving up to the high school, will just even add more to the mindset of these kids if the, if the course is done correctly. The mindset of the kids as they move from middle school to high school. And at some point, hopefully, we can, we can get it to the elementary level. But this is excellent progress that we're making with respect to this program and the anticipated impact that a program like this is going to have. We should see a number of changes in terms of the children who participate in this program. So that I'm very appreciative of. And also, I want to just really extend a big thanks to all the folks in the district for the phenomenal work you've done in getting this district ready for instruction. Realizing that you had a number of hurdles to overcome to get us to this point. No one's saying it's perfect, but to be, to, to just to be able to engage in that level of discourse and work to get us to this point, staff, teacher training, all the things that are connected to this, 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 this virus. It's a mountain to climb. And you certainly have done monumental work in getting us to this point. So personally, I wanted to just say thank you to all of you. And I know the technical issues that have been involved have been a major challenge as well. So to all of our technical people who have jumped in and, and tried to get us to the, to this point where we can at least engage our kids. The last thing I want to mention is that Dr. Benitez and I would like to request an item to be agendized for our next board meeting, and that is support for Proposition 16, which would repeal Section 31 of Article 1 of the Constitution, California Constitution. And that proposition dealt with Prop 209, which set in motion a number of things that would not allow us to look at, at ethnicity as a factor in many areas, in employment, in education. And that really did damage to a lot of programs that were in place at that time. So I'm urging that we agendize this item for hopefully our next board meeting where we can, we can look at how we can support this, 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 this law that's working its way through the California State Assembly. That would be great. And I want to thank Board Member Benitez for supporting me on that.
Absolutely.
We're working on this. We're both recommending this together.
Great, thank you.
I don't know if Dr. Benitez wants to say anything.
I concur, Dr. Williams. It, it's a smooth transition from the equity conversation that in order to be equitable, we have to take social constructs like race, sex, ethnicity, things like national origin into explicit consideration, whether it's in our procurement or in our hiring. So thank you for moving this forward, Dr. Williams.
Yeah, this seemingly fits into our, any equity policy that this district is trying to put together. This would be a major factor in that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kerr?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of things. I just want to shout out Californians for justice. They had their Student Voice and Racial Equity Data kickoff last week, and it was a webinar. Dr. Baker, several of our exec staff, and most importantly, a couple of our students were on the line and presenting that day to talk about the student voice and equity work. So to our statewide CFJ partners, congratulations, and we look forward to the good work and to our students who presented so clearly. Thank you for that work, and we look forward to what comes next in that partnership. I want to thank Congresswoman Nanette Barrigan, Mayor Robert Garcia, Councilmember Rex Richardson, Dr. Chris Kelly, and the CTA reps who were at an event today in support of a federal, continued or more, federal funding for schools. We know that every voice matters. We know that the USDA waiver came because people advocated. But we understand that in order to serve students well this year, we need lots of voices reminding people that they have to provide the resources for us to do that well. So I want to thank them for the invitation to participate on behalf of our students. I want to thank our ASL interpreters who are here for the first time tonight. Welcome, Lena Serrano and Julie Morse, for your great work. We are grateful to have you here. And we've talked a lot about gratitude. We've talked a lot about grace and patience and working through the inevitable stumbles of a first day of school. And we all talk about it, and that we're going to afford people that. But yesterday was really, really important and really inspiring to witness our community members in the forums of parents on Twitter and on Facebook and on Instagram lifting each other up in their struggles. And if someone would post, I can't figure this out, people rushing in to assist them in addition to staff. So we know how hard staff has been working, but watching the community come together to remind each other, to breathe, to provide the link of how to reboot or reconnect your Chromebook, sharing Zoom links so that everyone could feel connected and be connected. I want to thank our parents and our community for rallying around each other yesterday because we could feel the rallying around the people who have done the work as you supported our efforts to connect every child. So thank you to staff who continue to make phone calls every day to find that other 10% and that other 19%, who are making phone calls and doing home visits and doing those things because our deep desire to connect and serve all of our students really is apparent in everything that's happening. So to our staff and students, to everyone behind the scenes, and most importantly, our community for lifting each other up. Thank you for doing that yesterday, and we look forward to it continuing to get smoother. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, I'm in awe of what this staff does and what our teachers do. I just wish that we could reproduce this teacher training week for the general public, which began on Monday, the 24th, and went through Friday, August 28th, to see the rigorous training that they did to try to make our distant learning effective. It's quite impressive. So once again, heartfelt thanks to our wonderful staff, all you great folks. First day of school, I took the occasion to visit Lowell Elementary and Rogers Middle School and Wilson High School, and had good visits with Dow Lawson and Jeff Wood and Kim Holland. The spirits are great. The schools look great. And I was amazed at the number of teachers who are in the classroom, teaching from their classroom. Have to say, a personal bias, I'm very impressed with that. Mr. Tom, for example, a math and science teacher at Rogers Middle School. There he is in his room with his schedule on the board, his learning aids, all positioned so that he can use them with his students. That is preparation to deliver first-class instruction. And I know it was repeated in many, many classrooms and homes throughout the district. So kudos to one and all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in alignment with our equity conversation, one of the ways in which we uphold equity, as we've talked about in here, is through policy. And whether that means creating new policy or getting rid of bad policies. So Prop 16 would do that, get rid of Prop 209, which was not equitable, particularly for the communities that we are trying to empower here in Long Beach. Prop 15 does the same thing. It provides funding to do some critical work in schools and communities. Today, the city of Long Beach launched its Yes on Us campaign, which ensures a broader future through an equity lens in Long Beach. This week, we also took another critical step along policy lines by reexamining our Long Beach Promise. So thank you to Superintendent Baker, President Bynum, and President Connolly, along with our mayor, Mayor Garcia, for upholding the original intent and commitment of a Long Beach Promise through a racial equity lens and truly make this a Long Beach Promise for all in 2020. So again, these are awesome examples of how we uphold our commitment to equity through policies and, as I've said before, with resources as well. So I really do appreciate all the work our district is doing in this super-ultra-challenging time, and in particular, for our most vulnerable, highest-needs students. The grace and patience, as my colleagues have shared here, of our parents. I know it's much appreciated, and I know it's not going to be right overnight, but I have full confidence in our executive staff, in all of our staff, our CSEA, Taub, teachers, nurses, instructional aides, that have the best intentions at hand. I want to take a couple of moments here to also thank Dr. Heenan, Dr. Rachel Heenan, and Dr. Aaron Simon, again, upholding this commitment to equity by taking very valuable time on Monday night before the opening of schools to meet with parents of students with disabilities, predominantly Spanish-speaking parents on Monday night at a parent forum on special education. And again, I think those spaces really reflect the best of what this district is. And I know that it means a ton to parents that oftentimes feel that no one is listening, right? That's been one of the things that has struck me most about public comments, that not everyone was in that space, but we had close to 100 people in that space. But that there are many spaces like this. One on, on, was it Monday, Dr. Simon? Was it Monday? Yeah. Yeah, Monday, Monday bef- today's Wednesday, right? Where if nothing else, and I'm not trying to minimize or trivialize it, the importance of, for parents to know, parents that are frustrated, parents where there may be some building that needs to be done, parents that at some point may have lost trust to see our exec staff there and being responsive and being proactive and being committed to following up, not just a one-time conversation. So thanks to Long Beach Forward and to Dr. Simon and Dr. Heenan for making some time on an extremely busy week, but, but I loved participating in that with them. The last thing I would say is, we had a good discussion on public comment tonight, Madam Chair. Chair. Our commitment to listening was reflected in that conversation, in that discussion. And so I appreciate everyone that's physically coming out to make public comments. We heard the honking, so to the folks that were driving by honking, to folks that submit emails, I apologize. We've been getting so many emails, I'm reading every single one, but just unable physically to respond to every single one, but I'll get there and respond. I am listening. Folks that will be able to call in in the near future, we are listening. Public comment is extremely important to us, and I would say this, we have an LCP that we'll see a next iteration of. Appreciate the fact that we're extending the adoption of it, so that we can have more hearing. We had public comment today, making recommendations to the LCP. I encourage everyone, there are multiple ways, we even have a hotline for folks to call in, to visit the website, participate in the thought exchange, fill out the recommendation, and come to our next school board meeting, so that we can, again, reflect that we are listening through the recommendations, through the decisions, through the resources that are attached with this LCP, particularly for our English learners, our foster youth, and our poor students in the district. So much appreciation to everyone, especially now, when so many things are going on, that are involved, engaged, vigilant, and holding our institution accountable to our communities. And I appreciate our staff for being as actively listening as well. Thank you to all this week.
Thank you. I appreciate all the heartfelt acknowledgements from my colleagues, and just to honor our staff and everybody else, I'm going to keep my comments brief. I do appreciate what everybody has said, and I second that opinion, I really do. I just wanted to share something that I saw from Stanford Middle School, and it's something that really hit home with me for what everybody's going through, and it's for the letters "grace." G, forgive yourself and others a chance to adapt. R, remember that everyone is trying their best. A, assume a positive intention. C, connect with your child's teachers. And E, expect changes. So I think if we all keep a little grace with us, we'll be able to get through this. Superintendent report?
Thank you. I just have a few announcements, and just want to echo the thanks that you all have given to staff. It takes 10,000-plus employees to make Long Beach Unified work. And so just think of that number. We don't all, we don't get to be in the room with all of them, but it has been a hard-working summer and an incredibly hard-working last few weeks to get every detail managed for day one. We knew there would be challenges, because every year, when we open school, there are challenges. This year, there are just different challenges. So in past years, we're looking at balancing classrooms, and we're looking at overly enrolled schools. We typically have issues with air conditioning. So this year, there are different issues, but we stand ready to solve the issues and to be here for our community until every student that we can find is enrolled on campus and connected to a teacher. So you will continue to hear about those efforts. And just that we want to remember, when we think about equity, that we serve about 70,000 students, and the variation of what families are experiencing is a very wide variation. And I heard many of those stories told at the podium today. There was a feature on one of our family's single dad and his children on Long Beach Post, and so we are thinking about all of our families when we think about how to manage the district for 70,000 students. And then just a couple other things, points of interest. We have been asked about voting centers, and so I do want to affirm for the community and for those who are listening, that we are actively engaged with local officials to determine how we can, as much as possible, participate in being a voting center. We know that voting is an incredibly important activity. It's something that we can teach our students about, those who are of age and those who are coming up in our schools, and so we are actively engaged to have our schools used as voting sites. And then just lastly, thank you again for the community, this was said many times, but offering teachers, principals, office staff, patients, every school, and we've talked about this as we come back to central office in the afternoons, every school that we have been to has had office staff troubleshooting things that they didn't know how to do last week. And so they, you know, the patience that's been offered to them, but every school has been a place of teamwork, and where, and our staff can just take pride in being part of the Long Beach family. So I thank the community for being patient with us. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Are there any announcements? No? Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.